Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's work session of the Portsmouth Planning Board from 6:00 to 7:00. And tonight's work session will be on zoning changes from the zoning ordinance. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Rick Tanter. We've got an agenda to follow, I'm assuming?
Yes. What I've done is I've just prepared an outline. This is not formal wording to be prepared, but I just wanted to go through the types of changes that we're looking at now because as we've started to use the zoning ordinance, we've found some things that we didn't change, that we probably should have changed, and some changes that we made that we really need to do some fine tuning of. And I've grouped it into four packets here. There's really a fifth piece that I'll talk about at the very end. But we have a series of, and I'll just go through it and talk about these changes and then these proposed changes. And anything that, questions you have or any other ideas that you have, please just bring them up as I'm going along. The first set of changes has to do with our wetlands regulations. We have, and what I've done here, there's two pages of sort of a table of contents, and then you get into it starting on page three, the actual substantive changes. So we can really start on page three of this packet. The first part is just sort of an index. There are some, in our wetlands regulations, we have some uses that are permitted, that don't require a conditional use permit. And we've had a couple of things that we've found that really, we think probably should be in the list of exempt activities. One is sheds that are on posts or piling, small sheds, and we have to define what that size is. But you find a lot of these in the backyards of houses, and the backyards obviously tend to be toward the wetland areas. So we thought that that would be one area where it's a new area. Typically, they've, in the past, before we changed the zoning ordinance, all these things went to the Board of Adjustment for variances.
So this is because they're, excuse me, pre-existing?
No, this is for new ones, for new sheds.
Oh.
Like somebody wants to put in a new shed in their backyard, and they put it on a poster piling so that they're not covering the whole ground area, so water can flow under them.
Right, okay.
And because we've moved from a variance standard to a conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit has very, is more, has a little bit more control in some ways, and we don't want to have people necessarily have to go through two phases, through the conditional use permit, and then to the Board of Adjustment if they really can't do it anyplace else on their property. We thought that sheds, these sheds with very limited ground coverage could be exempt from the conditional use permit, yes.
And who will define the term "small"?
Well, we will do that when I bring you the draft of the ordinance. That will be in there. That's basically the-
Is that physical, 10 by 10?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that?
Something like that. 10 by 10. We have, 100 square feet is a standard we use right now for a lesser setback from lot lines, so we could use that same area. And then generator pads, we're getting a lot of requests for generator, emergency generators now, and we're going to have to change our noise. Later in this packet, I talk about changing the noise standards for these things because they, it's very hard to permit them because of the kind of noise they make, even though they don't usually make any noise at all. So we're looking at a couple of examples, and we're finding the generator pads are another area that could be, especially if they're very small, and 10 square feet is a typical, I mean, is a breakpoint that we see for these pads. So that's another thing that we would exempt. Setbacks from the waterfront, we have setback regulations, wetlands, setbacks from wetlands and from the waterfront. But for some reason, I'm not sure why it hasn't occurred up till now, things like boat houses don't really make sense to setback from the waterfront, you know, and piers and docks. And so we want to put that, it's a common sense change, and we would want to reflect the estate regulations from the Shoreland Protection Act. It could be a guide for how we would draft those regulations, things that could be exempted from those wetland setbacks.
Sheds, Rick, or is that like a water-dependent sheds?
Yeah, it would be that kind of, yeah. Something that would be water-dependent, yeah. Right now, there is a provision in our zoning that says the planning board may require the findings of an independent New Hampshire certified wetland scientist. But rather than have something come to the planning board and then have it be determined and then go back again, we thought it would be a good idea to have the planning board or the planning director be able to require that, so to kind of streamline that process.
Does that make sense, Rick, to put that almost as a blanket statement?
May require.
No, or the planning director.
I mean, generally, other than-
Well, my guess is we could implement that in several different-
There may be other places. We could look at other places for that, too.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, who would make the determination, whether it's the planning board or-
Well, it could be that the planning director didn't do it, and it came to the planning board, and the planning board said, "We're not satisfied." So now we're going to do it. So it gives us, you have two bites at the apple, in other words. The first step would be for the planning director to make that determination.
Which one would hope on, most of the time, they would make that?
Yeah.
You know, whatever the proper decision is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it just gives another opportunity. And then there's a, we found recently that the wetlands regulations use the term "use" differently than the rest of the ordinance does. In most of the ordinance, "use" means like a land use, a particular use, like a residential use or commercial use. And in the wetlands regulations, the word "use" is used to mean like a change, like putting some paving in or something like that. It has nothing to do with a land use, but it has to do with an activity or improvement. So it's a general matter, we're going to want to go in there, and it may not be in this first round, but just clean up the language so we don't have that confusion. So that may not be in this next round, but it'd be something that we would be looking at in the future. Most of these things, I don't think you've seen any of these issues come up, but we're beginning to see them at the staff level. And we're on page five of this right now, just turning to page five. So the next set of changes and signs, you know, we spent so much time on signs in developing the zoning ordinance, and they're back again. And we have a lot of issues with signs. So one issue is there's some wording in the historic district, relating to signs in the historic district, that suggests, and if you read it the way I read it, it says, but other people read it differently, that freestanding signs, signs which are structures in and of themselves, freestanding signs in the historic district, need to go for review to the Historic District Commission. But there's been enough different interpretation of the wording there, that I think we just want to clarify that. Then there are some exemptions in the sign regulations, things that don't need a sign permit. And there, one is directional signs that don't have any text other than, they say, "Enter here," or, you know, "Do not enter here," and that sort of thing. And we don't think that we want to necessarily require every one of those signs to obtain a separate sign permit, but we do think that they should be included in the overall sign area. So that was one, because there are some larger directional signs that we've seen being proposed. With respect to projecting signs and flags, the city council has just gone through a process of developing a new policy for flags and projecting signs. And as part of that policy, the city, the city council, where something goes through the city council for a license, the, there's this question of whether, because it's on city property, it's hanging over city property, whether it really falls under the zoning or not. So we're trying to clarify that and make that distinction between those things which are signs on private property and those things, and therefore clearly zoning-related signs, and those signs which are still reviewed by the planning board through this process we've been going through for the last couple of years of making a recommendation to the city council on a license, but it's not a zoning issue so much.
And when you say "a zoning issue," Rick, you mean, is the basic issue, whether it's counted in the square footage?
Yes.
Like if I have an A-frame sign that's 3 by 3?
We don't count that. We wouldn't count that in the total sign area.
And so it's just clarifying then?
Yes, right.
And the same with the projecting sign. If I have a 3 by 3 projecting sign, it isn't counted as part of the total square footage?
Right.
Okay.
But it would still be subject to review?
It would still be subject to review, yes, yeah. With respect to number three, public educational historical institutional signs, we have very strict regulations for signs in residential districts. And in the previous zoning ordinance, we had an exemption, it wasn't listed as an exemption, but there was a special provision for these types of signs that were not for residential uses, they were for other uses, such as, for example, the sign for the entry to the high school, which is in a residential district, it's a freestanding sign. And so the zoning ordinance previously allowed those up to 16 square feet, and so we're proposing to restore that previous provision so we don't run into any problems in the future.
And we kind of accidentally took that out.
We kind of accidentally took that out. Yeah, it's one of those oversights that was there. Parapets versus wall signs, we just want to clarify and tighten up some of these issues because there are, in the zoning ordinance, there are, these are treated similarly, and we're just trying, for all types of uses, and we want to make sure that a parapet sign, which is a sign that sticks above the building, is regulated in one way, and a wall sign on the building is regulated differently. And basically, it's, the wall signs are limited to the first floor unless you can get, unless there's a use that's primarily on upper floors, then you could have one wall sign per facade for those.
So do you define a parapet?
Yes, yeah.
It's up on top?
Parapets stick, I think, more than 18 inches above the roof line or something like that, and then a parapet sign is on that parapet.
So, Rick, one says, the fourth item down, delete limitation to ground floor uses in single-use buildings.
Right now, wall signs are only allowed for ground floor uses in single-use buildings. But if you have a building such as the new Portlock Marriott, for example, that sign needed a variance because it was, but it really is the appropriate sign for that building because it fits into the design of the building, and it's for an upper floor use because there's no hotel on the first floor. So it needed a variance. We're finding these special cases that, oh yeah, that makes sense. And if a new building comes in, we'll have the same situation again for that. In our projecting sign requirements, we changed the width requirement, the amount of projection in the zoning, to say that it could project no more than a third of the width of the sidewalk, which works for some locations, but for places like, well, some of the backstreets, a lot of the backstreets have sidewalks that are four feet wide, which would mean you could only have a one and a third foot wide projecting sign, which really doesn't make sense. So what we're thinking about is keeping the maximum of four feet and returning to the previous requirement, instead of saying it cannot extend more than a third of the width of the sidewalk, simply say that it can't be closer than two feet to the edge of the sidewalk.
That makes sense.
It's just more flexibility. We were kind of thinking about a different kind of sidewalk at the time. In terms of sign, aggregate sign area, number six, we have, we have two different ways of allowing aggregate sign area, the total sign area. One is a certain number of square feet per foot of lot frontage, and another is a certain number of square feet per foot of building frontage. And we've had a lot of difficulty with this. This is sort of carried over, some of this is carried over from the prior ordinance. And we're thinking that maybe we can eliminate this aggregate sign area requirement altogether because all of the individual requirements are pretty clear now. There's so many square feet per linear foot of building frontage of wall sign and so forth. And so we think we could probably get rid of that, but at least we would get rid of the lot frontage line. So we're just trying to get rid of that aggregate because it makes it very difficult for the inspections department to determine the allowable signage. We have to, it's like the, you have to do, I can't remember what you call it in mathematics, where you have to do a comparison of the limit of the three, the greater of two things, and two of them are the lesser of two other things.
This is why Rick Hopley isn't here in therapy.
In terms of, another sign area thing is freestanding signs. For shopping centers, we have a individual sign allowance per establishment in the shopping center. We have an aggregate sign area allowance. And then we have an allowance for freestanding signs, which has to fit within the aggregate sign area. And if we take away the aggregate sign area requirement, this won't be a problem, but we're thinking that it's another instance where the sign at the entrance to the shopping center takes away from the individual establishment signs. And we've determined that the individual establishment signs are a good ratio, so we don't really see why we need to do that. It's like we're really over-regulating or double counting things. So we're thinking about changing that so that the freestanding sign area stands on its own, so to speak, and doesn't interact with the individual signs on the stores. In the business district, we've set a limit of 20 square feet for freestanding signs. And the business district is kind of an odd area because it includes the Plaza 800 area, but it also includes the Route 1 bypass between the bridge and the traffic circle. Those are kind of the primary areas that are called the business district. And so we're thinking maybe moving the B district from sign district three to sign district four, so we allow a larger area for freestanding signs. And there's been a question about whether the 100 square feet is too restrictive for the general business and gateway districts. I still think it's a good number. We had a lot of discussion about this, but we'll go and look at some of these other signs. There are some signs where the freestanding, the development tries to get every single business in the development on one freestanding sign, and so you get these little tiny things you can't read as you're going 40 miles an hour down Lafayette Road. So that's an instance where maybe our sign area requirement is correct, and they've just made bad decisions on the signs.
Yeah, that's good.
So we're going to take another look at that.
You had a good sign, a good slide on that at one point, I remember.
Yeah, we'll go back.
There was those two different layouts. One was all little small ones and-
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove by one today, and, you know, I wasn't going that fast.
Right.
[laughing]
And then there's this number eight, signs on more than one facade of a building. This is a, we have some, we added some provisions in there to allow for, in most cases, signs are supposed to be facing, the main entrance of the building facing the street. But we have situations where a building either has two fronts, one front facing the street and the other front facing a parking lot in both entrances. So we have some, essentially an exemption there, provided that the sign is not visible from another, from outside the lot. And so we're just trying to clarify this and give a little bit more flexibility for these uses. We've had a couple of those situations come up recently. Number nine, special event signs. The ordinance has always, I think has always read, you can have one special event sign, but there are, at times, but there's cases where businesses want to have a couple of banners on. And if it's only limited to a, I can't remember how many weeks it is, but a certain period of time in a year, we felt it didn't make, it wasn't really that serious to limit it to one sign. So we're suggesting that just the word "one sign" be changed to "signs." And then, internal sign, this gets back to the signs that are visible from, that are on the backs of buildings. We have this definition that we created, for shopping centers, of an internal sign, which is basically a sign that's just meant to be seen from inside the lot. And in a commercial district, we've had some issues with this, too. This actually is coming up with a variance request. Actually, they just got the variance the other night for the Vitamin Store on Woodbury Avenue, where they had a sign in the back of the building, and it was visible from off the lot, so it didn't qualify for our definition of internal sign. But what we felt was, really the intent was that the sign not be visible from a residential district. It really doesn't matter if it's visible from another shopping center. So we're just trying to make that a little bit more flexible as well.
What would an internal sign actually be?
Well, the internal sign would be at South Gate Plaza, for example. The intent was, the sign is, it's on the front of the business, and it's only meant really to be seen from somebody in the parking lot from that business, but it's, but it's not meeting all the, so we wanted to say, really, we don't really care what that's, much about that sign. We don't care how big it is or anything, if you can't see it from off the property, you know, if it's really directed toward the patrons of that business.
I would find that'd be very few.
There are-
They would comply with this.
Right. Well, that's why we went to say, from an adjacent lot in a residential or mixed residential district.
Right.
Because really, what we're really concerned about is impact on people passing in the street and in people who are in residential districts.
Okay.
Page eight, getting into some a little bit more complicated things now. One, this first one, number dwelling units per structure, there, if you look at that table, this is the excerpt from the Table of Use Regulations, and the city in its residential districts has not permitted a structure, a building, with more than eight dwelling units in it. So if you had an apartment building, it could be up to eight units, if it were in the Garden Apartment, Mobile Home District, or in the former apartment district, which is now called the General Residency. In the downtown, you can't have more than eight dwelling units. You can have a multifamily dwelling with more than eight dwelling units. But that's the only really place that you can have a building with more than eight dwelling units. And what's happened, what we're seeing is that we're, it's really not, it's about scale. It's about controlling scale. But the scale is not necessarily defined by the number of dwelling units. It's maybe defined by the dimensions of the building. You know, if you could have an eight-unit townhouse structure, it would be the same kind of length and width as a 16-unit garden apartment structure, just because of the way these things are built. So, and we're thinking that maybe there's some dimensional requirement we could look at to address these issues. Now, it's going to come up tonight, actually, because if you see in the bottom of the table here, Lang and Longmeadow, the development is having an amended site plan approval coming before you, they are proposing structures that have 24 dwelling units apiece in it. And it's actually been approved in the past, and I'm not really sure, I think it, I don't think it was actually, it got through site plan review, but it has never got a building permit to allow those buildings to be built. And I'm not really sure whether it slid through site plan review without that issue coming up, or whether it came up and the determination was made that we'll put it off to when the building permit comes up. Because what we're seeing is, what the developers will have to do under the existing zoning is they will have to take those 24-unit buildings and put firewalls in places so that they've only got groups, three groups of eight buildings, even though they'll look like a building to you from the outside, but it will in fact be three legal buildings.
What's the logic behind limiting a given building to eight units?
Don't know. I think it has to do with the scale of the building. I think it has to do with, you know, how big a structure we want to have. Do we want to have really long, long buildings?
So 55 Congress Street, let's say, right downtown?
Well, 50, see, that's allowed, and that's allowed because it's in the central business district.
But take it out of there.
It would not be allowed, right. Yeah. So it's a question that, you know, we've talked about for a while. We didn't do anything about it in the zoning ordinance revision, but I think that maybe by looking at the dimensions of the building, the scale of the building, it's going to be better than just saying an arbitrary number of eight units. It also came up when we were talking about the proposed affordable housing project at Atlantic Heights, because they had to, I think we actually made a special change in the zoning ordinance to say they were exempt from that eight unit per building limit.
I was repeating, the house on, I want to say Rockland, it's not a house, it's an apartment complex, but it's a-
Oh, that was, yeah, yeah, the apartments, Portsmouth Apartments?
Yeah.
If I could still follow that, yeah.
That's more than eight, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, that's got to be more than eight.
Yeah, so is that what we're trying to avoid, you know, creating structures like that in a residential? I'm just trying to visualize what the idea is.
My thinking is, you know, if you had, let's see, let's pick some area of town. Atlantic, pick the Atlantic Heights one, that vacant parcel out there. If you had this big high-rise out there, this huge building, would that be appropriate for there?
Can we control for that, though, dimensionally?
We control it as a height.
Right.
And I guess the issue is, I'm thinking more of a, like the Lang and Longmeadow, where maybe the concept was that we would have buildings that were no more than, you know, 100 by 40, and we're ending up with buildings that are 160 by 90. I mean, I'm not really sure what the concept was.
Well, and across the street from Lang and Longmeadow, those are those garden apartments? I mean, that looks like more than eight units, but maybe what you're saying is they're firewalls?
Maybe, I don't know.
You know, the one, Beachstone?
Yeah, Beachstone, I don't know.
Yeah, those were.
They probably predate.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are pretty old.
Yeah, and you can see, those are the biggest, the biggest buildings that we have in the city, I think, right now.
You know, who knows, because, David, the historian is not here, but it's possible the eight-unit limit was put in after all those big apartments.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Because nothing's been built in recent history.
Long time, right.
The only one that's outstanding, as far as I know, is the Lang project, which-
Right.
Yeah, not in 10 years that I remember.
You know, the reason I'm asking is because I'm a big mixed residential, mixed use, I live around the corner from the place on Rockland, and I kind of like it. I think it's good to integrate those structures into more residential neighborhoods. It removes this kind of ghettoization concept. So it's actually something worth considering in terms of what we want to see our community look like.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, having said that, I don't think there are any lots, really, other than like the Lang lots. I mean, it just would seem hard to-
It may not be, it may not be a big issue, is what you're saying, because we don't have any more opportunities for that kind of development.
Yeah, I don't see it. But I don't know, and raising buildings can happen.
But if that building off of Rockland, would it be 50 units, it would dramatically change that neighborhood, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I mean, the-
How many units is it?
I don't know. I know it's more than eight.
I can't remember.
The 12?
It's more than eight. I was somewhere between 12 and 20, I was going to say. I want to say, I want to say it's 20.
And I agree, I do like those. I think that's the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah. And there may be a couple of, I mean, you know, thinking back by the Pearl, you know, the place across the street that has been looked at, it was part of the arts speak development for-
Oh, right, yeah. It's not residential now.
Right.
I'm thinking that maybe, I mean, one option might be just to say, instead of where we say more than eight dwelling units, maybe we say, you know, maybe we allow more than eight dwelling units in certain districts and just don't put a cap on it. Is that what you're thinking? Just control it through our other dimensional regulations?
Maybe.
Existing, yeah. Well, we'll look at that some more. I mean, that's just an issue that's come up, and we're struggling with how to, how to address that.
Well, it's a combination of affordable housing concerns and the idea that mixing your uses a bit can make character.
So with the way the ordinance is now, do we feel that we have enough authority to regulate the dimensions?
Well, you would have to, you'd have to put it in. I mean, you have to, if you wanted, if you wanted to, again, there are two questions. One is, are there any more lots that have those opportunities for things to happen? And are we concerned about regulating it, or do we want to be more flexible? We could say that in those, we could say simply that in certain districts, the GRC and the Garden Department, Mobile Home, that you can say more, you know, they would allow more than eight dwelling units, you could just say that without any cap on it. The other option would be to do that and then to put in some maximum floor area, floor footprint area. We'll have to look at, do a little bit more exploring on this.
Done. But if we put a, pick your number, eight units and X number of square feet, the developer could always go for a variance. Yes?
Developer can always go for a variance.
For everything, literally everything?
Yes, right.
Yeah, okay. So we're sort of making a very strong suggestion by saying eight units, but if a developer says, "I really want 12," because that's the only way the numbers work, they could still get that.
And see what else they have to offer. You know, do you have lead, do you have green, do you have?
Well, right, and thinking about what are our goals? If our goals are affordable housing, then it gets into square foot per unit more.
Mm-hmm. Well, it may be that you don't, I mean, you want to leave this, but allow for, not a relaxed, I mean, the problem with the variance is that there's no guarantee, and it's a crapshoot, so it's tough. But, you know, at one point, we were talking about density credits for affordable housing and for artist-led workspace and stuff like that. And that may be the spot where this gets relaxed. But I don't, you know.
I think as a statement of fact, though, I think it's 85% of all requests are granted for variances. It's a very, very, very high number.
Yeah, it is.
It's hard to say no, unfortunately. I mean, there's precedent set all over the place.
In the next item, building height, we have a provision that rooftop appurtenances can be, which are mechanical enclosures and so forth, can be up to 10 feet above the rooftop, so above the height limit. And the problem is that this doesn't really allow for an elevator penthouse, so it's not really realistic in most cases. So we're thinking about maybe changing that to allow it to 15 feet if it has a certain setback from the roof edge, just to allow that to happen.
Can you combine those two, Rick? Make it 10 feet and 15 feet for elevator penthouses?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, sure.
Is this trumpable by the historic district?
Right, that's what I'm thinking about.
Article 10, or what is now Article 10?
What do you mean, is it trumpable by it?
Well, I think that one of the things that we ran into in the Historic District Commission was all of these appurtenances in the historic district that look very unsightly if they were not moved back far enough from the parapet of the building.
Well, we could certainly put that setback in so that they're not, they're not, they are setback in the historic district. You can look at that. I mean, that's what I was suggesting, that we could increase it to 15 feet if setback.
We did find that was quite a challenge, and there were-
We did find that was quite a challenge, and there were several times, I remember, that we asked applicants to put up, what was it, some kind of like? Cardboard or? Yeah, like some kind of faux thing.
See what it looked like.
Yeah, to get a sense of the scale from all the different angles, because you never know, there was some little shot through the, you know, some alleyway or something. And that, it can be really jarring, I found, the few that are still left in there, you know, you think, "Oh, what's that thing doing there?"
Okay.
Is the setback related to the building height? I mean, do we have to correlate those things? Like, if you have a forty-foot-high building versus a sixty-foot, does it need to be setback?
Yeah, the setback would have to be more for a lower building.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that fifteen feet might not be enough to hide a ten-foot. It just depends on the height of the building.
Can we be more performance criteria-driven, like, can't be seen from the ground anywhere?
That would be, that would be, that would be actually not a bad thing.
It's invisible, in fact.
Hardwood force.
Visible.
He's like, who? How tall do you have to be?
Right, Superman.
Along those lines, it makes a lot of sense.
Well, you could do it especially for the historic district.
Yeah.
Right. As long as it's a brick facade. And it's all poured brick, whatever it is. For that special mason ring.
Just keep talking while I write. We ran into a very odd situation, which is that accessory buildings have a setback that is stricter than the setback for primary buildings in the Central Business District. Central Business District has a zero side and rear lot line setback requirement, but there's sort of, there's no exemption in the ordinance for accessory buildings. So theoretically, a, you know, a transformer or a shed would have to be further from the lot line than a much larger building. So, we would want to reduce that, basically make a special provision for, for the, for those districts where there are zero lot line setbacks. Another historic district issue, mechanical equipment, we have an exemption, we changed it in the revised zoning ordinance a little bit. This is for like heat pumps and air conditioners and that sort of thing. And we, it doesn't encompass, or it's kind of arbitrarily strict. So, we wanted to basically allow for, trying to think how this works, window or wall-mounted units. I think there is a, that's right. We wanted to allow, this allows things that extend out a foot from a building or extend up to four feet above the roof plane. But there are many things that are, that are actually being put at grade rather than on the roof. And so those things, which may have actually less impact than something on top of the roof, are not allowed. So, we're suggesting that we have things that are, that extend up to four feet above grade or roof mounting service. So, a ground-mounted thing could be exempted the same way a roof-mounted thing is exempted. And we may want to qualify this by saying that it's not visible from the street. So, we're seeing some of these issues where, again, it's like the generators are coming up, we're seeing a little bit more, people are redoing homes and putting some type of HVAC equipment that sits outside and doesn't really have a big impact because it's just like tucked around back and so forth. But it's, it is, we're stricter on those than we are on things that actually sit in the roof. So, we want to be a little bit more careful about that. We will definitely keep working in this language, that's the intent. Number five, we've been talking to a developer who is interested in putting a, putting one or more wind turbines on his roof, and it's not in the historic district, so don't be concerned about that. But what happens is, we have, we adopted this new wind turbine section of the zoning ordinance to try to promote those and to conform to state law, but we have a fallback, I mean, a fall zone area, a setback area to allow the tower to fall. And as you can see in this table here, it has to be one and a half times its height from the street. Well, if we're trying to promote buildings to be closer to the street, and a sixty-foot building has a fifteen-foot-high turbine on top of it, that would mean the turbine would have to be one and a half times seventy-five feet from the street, so it couldn't actually be put on the building. So...
That's tough to do.
Yeah, so we're, so we're trying to, so we're going to massage this a little bit to make a different set of fall zone requirement for, for towers that are roof-mounted.
Do we have any of these guys in town?
What's that?
Do we have any of these in town?
Well, there is one roof-mounted turbine in town right now, but we have a developer who's interested in doing something in the Gateway District. And it could be a very good building, but would not be able, and he wants to do, you know, lead platinum, he wants to do the top level of lead, but he wouldn't be able to do wind turbines with our current ordinances. So, we want to see whether we can, and it kind of raised the issue, it's not specifically for him, but it's any building that we want to have close to the street would not be able to have a wind turbine on top of it.
And those standards are right out of the state law, right?
They're, they're out of, not out of state law, they're out of a model.
Right, but the model, right, right.
So, we just copied from the model ordinance.
We should probably let them know.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm not sure this, it's not, I mean, we should, but it's not going to happen in too many communities. It's only going to happen, the small towns, people aren't going to have it.
Right, no, it's going to be the urban's.
This is, number six is an issue that I do want your input on. When we revised the zoning ordinance, we defined yards as open space areas. And then we defined open space as landscape area that specifically excludes parking and accessways and so forth. Now, we're going to see a couple of applications coming in through site plan review, and it turns out that things that used to be allowed under the old ordinance are not allowed under the new ordinance, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just wondering whether that was our intent. Under the old ordinance, you could have your parking spaces in a front yard or a side yard. So, if you have a forty-foot front yard requirement, or a thirty-foot front yard requirement, you could have, maybe the first ten feet would be a landscaped strip, and then behind that could be parking spaces. Under the ordinance, the way it's written now, that entire thirty feet or forty feet has to be landscaped. And so, it does have an impact. It has a, maybe a beneficial aesthetic impact, but it does have an impact in terms of development potential. And I just wanted to get your feedback on how you think about this, you know, whether you think that that was, frankly, I don't remember whether it was something we discussed at great length, or whether it was something that we just kind of, the wording passed through and it was somewhat incidental, accidental.
Well, we did have one specific occasion on the Historic District Commission where someone actually wanted to move a whole house back in order to have parking in front.
Yep.
So, I have a particular issue with that.
Right.
So, I guess my obvious question is, like, how far out, you know, are we talking mostly the older neighborhoods that?
I think we're talking about new commercial development. So, I'm thinking about, along Route One, say, or along Woodbury Avenue.
Yeah, let's be strict, then. You know, I mean, they've got the space out there, so let's, you know, our whole goal is to get them to put it in the back, so.
Right, right. Okay. Does that?
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so, keep it the way it is, okay. We had a, we had a couple of surprised applicants.
And the result is, Rick, that they end up with fairly significant less development potential, particularly if they have a lot of street frontage.
Yes.
Right. You know, it might be useful, before we just say, before we quickly run over this, to make the planning director come back with a couple visuals for this. Because, I mean, if everybody feels strongly that we should leave it the way it is, that's fine, but I have a hard time envisioning what this really means. And since we are the frontline of people coming in and saying, "Did you really mean to do this?", I think it would be important if the whole board understood exactly what it is we're asking developers to do. And if the board is in support of that, great, but, you know.
That's a good point.
We also want to encourage high-quality development, and if there's too much development potential removed, then we might get less quality.
And we actually have, there's actually a variance request coming to the Board of Adjustment next week on this very issue. At the Meadowbrook site, they have a strip of parking along a side lot, a side lot line that they would like to, a strip in the side yard that they would like to use for parking and display. Number seven, generators, noise limits. We have, in our noise ordinance, we have a limit of fifty-five decibels in residential and mixed residential districts. And there's an exemption for emergency power generating equipment, but there's no exemption for testing of that emergency power generating equipment. You know, in the old days, it was something you would, you know, have in the garage and you'd wheel it out and start it up, and that would be when, you know, when the hurricane came through and the lights went out. But as I said earlier, lots of people are installing permanent, permanently affixed generators, gasoline or propane-fueled generators, and those things have to be tested once a week. So, and those generators have, typically have a sound pressure level of sixty-five decibels at twenty feet from the generator, which means that a generator in, and we're seeing a lot of these in some of the more urban parts of the city, so those couldn't possibly meet the standards. They'd have to be setback eighty feet from the lot line in order to meet the fifty-five decibel standard. So, we're going to suggest that you, and we're seeing, as I say, we're seeing a lot of these and trying to deal with them. We're suggesting that if we have strict controls on when they are tested, the hours of day they are tested, that they could go up to sixty-five decibels at the property line, wouldn't have to worry about the fifty-five limit.
How's that dealt with, Rick? Through, I'm assuming that's through, if I want to go for a generator at my house, I go to the building department?
Yep.
And they get the specs on the generator, and that's where it's prescreened?
Yep.
Because a lot of those have shrouds you can put over them, that noise attenuation shrouds?
If you, if you had that, then you could, then you could meet the standards, that would be, you could do that. But we haven't seen anybody propose that at this point, so.
I'm sure Rick's all over that, he knows that, more about that than...
We have discussed it a lot, Rick number one.
Yes.
He's Rick number two.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? When you say testing or exercising, what is exercising?
Exercising is, I think, I think they use the term exercise. What it really means is, I don't think so much as testing as it is, you got to run it, just so you, you got to run it frequent, on a regular basis, just so you can be sure it will run again.
It's like taking your car out for a spin.
Well, you say testing or exercising, and then in the next clause, you say providing that such testing.
Or exercising.
Should it say testing or exercising?
Sure, yeah.
Do we know how long that testing or exercising lasts? I mean, once a week is a lot, I'm thinking as someone that lives near an incredibly loud generator. It's really, really disturbing.
Typically, I know on the commercial generators, they'll run them once a month. So, I'm wondering why, that's something that should be discussed, you don't need to run them every week.
Well, we're told that you do need to, yeah. I don't know, maybe it's the residential ones are just...
It's like, God, you go on vacation, what?
Chuck, I'm sure Rick's aware of that. If Rick says, "Every week", that's fine, but...
Just an enforcement question. It says, okay, so the sound pressure levels shall not exceed fifty-five dBs, according to...
Well, this is all done by complaint. You know, as long as, I think that people would, you know, if people are saying that this is excessively loud, then somebody would have to go out with a sound meter and...
Who is that somebody?
Somebody from inspections, right? I think they would have the...
So, it's not, this is not a police matter?
No.
This is a building inspector or code enforcement or something. So, I'm assuming the code enforcement officer has a dB meter and he does his thing and says, "Hmm, fifty-eight, you're right."
Yeah.
Okay. I just wonder about the scale of this, at what, you know, how many, how many are we going to have of these downtown? It's just...
We're getting a lot of them.
That's, I mean, that's a lot of noise. Fire Department has one that they test on a regular basis of the Court Street Fire Station. It looks like it came out of a nineteen-twenty-eight Ford tractor. It really does, that thing's loud. But it works, I guess. They fire it up and they run it for ten or fifteen minutes or an hour and...
We're going to run out of time, I just want to, I'm going to skip over these definitional questions right now, we want to go over to the last page, if we could.
Sure.
Table. This is something we talked about earlier. We're doing the analysis now to try to figure out what are the appropriate dimensional regulations for various neighborhoods. As I've mentioned in the past, the zoning has changed over time, and so neighborhoods that were developed under one set of dimensional regulations have seen their lot area increase, their setbacks increase and so forth. As a result, we have lots of, lots of variance requests just to do things that fit within the character of the neighborhood. And just as an example, we were looking today at the historic zoning and saw that Elwin Park, which has a minimum lot area of fifteen thousand square feet, was developed at the time the zoning required a forty-five-hundred-square-foot lot. So, it's, there's lot area now is more than three times what it was when the area was developed. Now, the lots down there tend to be larger than forty-five-hundred square feet. We've done an analysis, we initially said, suggested ten thousand square feet, but Lee J. Feldman has been doing quite a bit of work on this, and has looked at some sample blocks and found that even reducing, even reducing it to ten thousand square feet wouldn't really do it for Elwin Park, but an eight thousand square foot minimum lot size would capture most of the lots that are there right now. So, we're going to be looking at this and looking to try to figure out what the appropriate lot size is for each of these areas. We found, you can see here that the Lincoln Avenue, Richards Avenue area, perhaps reducing that from seventy-five-hundred square feet to five thousand square feet. Atlantic Heights, most of those lots are two thousand square feet, down at that level. But by reducing it to, right now, there are no lots that comply with the minimum lot size in Atlantic Heights. But by reducing it to two thousand square feet, we could capture twenty-seven out of a sample of thirty-three lots. So, we, you know, may get two-thirds of lots conforming by reducing it to two thousand square feet. We have to be much more careful with the side setback and front setback requirements and so forth. But at least this way, we wouldn't be preventing people from doing, doing development that is consistent with what, how the neighborhood has been developed so far.
Paige, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to ask, big picture, sort of what the goal is of looking at this. I assume it's partly to be sure that most of the properties in these areas are reflecting current conditions, in terms of conformance, and maybe increasing density where possible?
Not so much increasing density, I think just, it's more a matter of not forcing homeowners to go through the hoops of the Board of Adjustment just to do something that is, you know, what the neighborhood is like.
And when they're going to get it anyway, because as Don said, eighty-five percent.
Reflecting what's there, right. I can give you a perfect example. One of the first things that I sat on in the planning board about two hundred years ago was, somebody wanted to split their property, their lot in half, which was really two lots. And I think, as I recall, it was five thousand square feet, the house was on one, and then there's empty lot, five thousand square feet. At the time, the minimum lot size was ten or twelve or something like that, and every other lot in the whole area was five thousand square feet. And the planning board said, "No." And it just, that didn't make any sense, because it would have been no different than any other place in that neighborhood, any other lot.
But the Board of Adjustment probably said yes. And that's, you know, what we're trying to get to, is it's hard for them to say no to any of these, they're just all these sliced white bread things that come to them, because you've got a whole neighborhood, how can you say no to that person when fifteen other people have it?
Well, that was my question, but it's a...
But the answer to that, the solution to that issue was quite a complex one.
And another thing about Atlantic Heights, just, I mean, Atlantic Heights is probably the most extreme example, but if you look at the lot frontage and lot depth, right now, they're required to have eighty feet of lot frontage and sixty feet of lot depth. But typically, instead of being wide, shallow lots, the lots in Atlantic Heights are narrow and deep. And so, if you just change the frontage from eighty feet to twenty-five feet, but increase the lot depth, you can get much closer to what the actual lot confirmation is right now. So, what we're trying to do, that we, it's more complicated, we thought that with our GIS system, it'd be a lot easier to do, but it's still not that easy. And we're still trying to work to get that. But I think that we'll be able to look at, come up with dimensional regulation, how we implement that in the, on the zoning map without making it overwhelmingly confusing. we implement that in the, on the zoning map without making it overwhelmingly confusing. Right, I don't think, I don't think we want to make every district, a different district, but I have seen zoning where you would have, you know, a, we sort of have it with GRA, GRB, and it may be, it may be that kind of thing, GRA one, GRA two, you know, something like that, where we have a code that's attached to the label that tells you what the dimensions are. So there's one code that's about use and one code that's about dimensions. We'll see how complicated it gets. I think that as, as this top line shows, there's, there's a bunch of, there were a bunch of subdivisions that were created around the same time in the city, you know, and those would be, we could treat those in one way and treat the kind of pre-zoning neighborhoods in another way, and treat the planned neighborhoods in another way. And so, so have it, have that, maybe come up with a limited number of changes. But the idea would be simply to make it less burdensome for the homeowners.
And do we have this as a topic for our joint BOA meeting next Wednesday?
It could be, yeah.
I think that'd be a good idea, just as a general concept to float it out, like, this is what the planning board's thinking about. What do you think of our brilliant idea?
And we can, we can actually, we were talking about doing a PowerPoint for that, so we can add this, add this to the PowerPoint.
That'd be great.
So you, you see us going to like six sub-districts?
Don't know yet, don't know yet.
Six, seven sub-districts?
Yeah, don't know. But it's, they may be overlays, you know, we'll see what, see how it comes out.
And maybe we'd want to do it sort of as a pilot, like, I mean, Atlantic Heights truly is unique. Try it in the Heights and maybe try it in SRB.
Yeah.
Because those seem, I mean, the Elwins and the Panaways and the Atlantic Heights are such discreet neighborhoods, it seems like that might, you know, we phase it in.
Yep.
Maybe.
Yeah, we could, yeah. We'd make it easier for us.
Well, I'd also be curious about how many variances are coming in. Is that what prompted these listings?
Yeah, well, two things. One thing that prompted it was when we were doing the, when we started out, the very first part of doing the analysis for the comprehensive rezoning, I, I did a scan of the, of the GIS system and found these concentrations of neighborhoods where a majority of the lots didn't even meet the minimum lot size requirement.
Remember you talking about that?
Right.
By the way, Manor was one.
We always have problems going along.
And Elwin Park surprisingly was one.
Yeah.
But knowing that Elwin Park was developed when the, when the minimum lot size is forty-five hundred square feet, kind of explains why that happened. So that was one thing. And the other thing is, is the zone, what you see in the, in the Board of Adjustment agendas, I mean, everything, I would say eighty percent of the applications are for side lot or side yard, front yard, rear yard, or building coverage.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask you.
Building coverage is definitely one, yeah.
Okay.
And you can see here, we're, we're talking about Atlantic Heights increasing from thirty to thirty-five percent. On the Islington, the, the GRC District, the Islington Street Corridor, most of the houses there are way over thirty-five percent, and we're talking, maybe going to fifty percent coverage in that area.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's just, you know, when you, I'm thinking about my neighborhood, I mean, I think we have twenty-five percent coverage.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Yeah, right. So why, you know, why say, okay, anything you do, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment? Just, I mean, some people like that kind of control, but it's just.
And the test is, does it make the world a better place to send everybody to the Board of Adjustment, particularly when the Board of Adjustment feels compelled to issue these variances?
Right.
Right.
So the next step from here is?
Next step from here is to kind of come up with the next step. We're going to, we're going to continue working, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be working a little bit more on this table, trying to refine the numbers, and we'll actually present some, we'll come up with a strategy for presenting, for organizing this in the district. And we'll come up with a draft language for a number of these.
So we'll probably have another work session?
Yes, we will have another work session, but at that time, you'll have something a little bit more defined, and you'll have it in advance, so you can look at it before the meeting.
All right, why don't we adjourn for five minutes, and then we'll start promptly at seven, and we'll get the public hearings underway.
Be here to answer questions and speak towards the application. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come back in front of you to discuss the Grand Street Project. We, you will find with our drawings that have been submitted to you and the summaries provided as well as information we'll bring forward this evening that we've been working diligently in the last month to address concerns that were brought forward. And so let me introduce to you the group of people that we have here to assist in the presentation this evening. Tonight I have Doug Roberts from J C J Architecture, who's the project manager for the project. We also have Doug LeJoy, who's the vice president of CES Consulting Engineering Services to answer any questions regarding lighting or the P A system. Gordon Levy is here with V H B, who's the director of that firm and will be able to answer any questions regarding the site work. Chris Dwyer and Dexter Legg, the co-chairs of the Joint Building Committee are here this evening. Russ Wilson is here, the City Recreation Athletic Director. He has a letter that was part of our application and again can answer any questions regarding our programming. Dave Allen, Public Works, is here to answer any questions that may come up. And Steve Bartlett, the City School Business Administrator. And I think we have everyone accounted for here this evening. We're here as part of what has been a six-year decision-making process for the expansion of the Portsmouth Middle School. City Council in August of 2009 approved a bond for the renovation and the addition to the existing middle school. As part of that process, we are needing to relocate the alumni field. And this is the location that the city had determined was where we were to relocate this alumni field, softball field. So as the application was publicly read, we'll be looking for demolition of the Wentworth School and the addition of the softball field with the amenities that are listed. To date, a number of meetings have occurred. May 5th, we had a TAC meeting with success in that meeting. We had three stipulations which were part of your package this evening. On May 12th, we had an approval with the Conservation Commission, again two stipulations which are listed as part of your application in front of you. May 13th, traffic and safety approval. May 20th, as you're aware, we got our conditional use permit. And additionally, we have been working with the contractor, Gil Bain Construction, and we're meeting with city staff and we are working on our construction management plan, which we're in really good shape, we think, for that. So we will have that completed shortly after this meeting. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Roberts, who's going to address the summary letter that was part of your application process.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Part of your packet, you should have a letter that summarizes the provisions to the documents that were incorporated. There were three areas that we were addressing in the additional information in the documents. As Lisa pointed out, it was the stipulations from the previous approvals. We also addressed the concerns that were discussed at the May 20th Planning Board meeting. And then we also added some additional notes and details to ensure the constructability of the final project once it is approved. So with that, I'd like to hit the highlights, if I could, of the information that was submitted in the summary letter. As you'll note on Sheet C1, legend and general notes, a note was added to, as a requirement of the conditional use permit, to ensure that during construction of the project, debris of the site shall be removed to the maximum extent practical. Again, there was concern that there's the wooded area along Market Street Extension, that there's some debris in there, we want to make sure that we clean that up as part of the project. On Sheet C2, Site Plan, the plan that was presented on May 20th was addressing a concern that was raised in a previous meeting about the need to add a barrier fence, if you will, between the property and the abutting property on Woodbury Avenue. The location that was shown on the site plan was immediately adjacent to the existing sidewalk. At the request of the city, we removed the, that barrier fence. It was felt that it would enhance the aesthetics of the site as well as the ease to maintain the property. In addition, there was the addition of trash receptacles on the property itself. We've located one each at each of the bleacher areas and then two near the concession stand. In addition, on the north end of the parking lot, there were three parking lot lights that were on the west side of the parking lot. So they were directing majority of light in towards the softball field. Reviewing the photometric study of the overall site, it was determined that there was a minimal contribution of, from those lights at the property line. So that we can say there is zero contribution of those parking lots on the abutting property there on Granite Street. Those site lights, those three site lights were moved to the eastern side of the property, that which is closest to the softball field. Again, the photometric studies bear out that those lights do not contribute any light at the property line in compliance with the zoning regulations. On Sheets C3, Layout Materials Plan, and Sheet D1, Demolition Plan, we've added a note to address the memorial stone. Remove and relocate memorial stone, court removal, storage and relocation with D P W. On the Sheet C4, Grading Utility Plan, where we are entering the site off of Granite Street, we are having to make up a grade change there. Again, in interest of staying away from the abutting property, there has been a note added, do not clear or grade within five feet of the property line of that abutting property. Again, making sure that there are minimal disturbance to that property line. Moving on to Sheet 7, Details, Site Details, we added some additional details, as I noted prior. This was done to increase the information for constructability and also provided specification for items such as the foul pole, barrier netting, and the trash receptacle I mentioned earlier. On Site Detail Sheet C8, we added two details to address the school bus turning movement and snowplow single truck turning movement on the site, showing that, how those vehicles would access the site and then turn around to leave the site. So those details were added. Significant changes were made to the Planting Plan, Sheet L1. Again, here to address the concern of light from cars being cast onto the abutting property and also as a barrier for any pedestrian access through the abutting property on Granite Street. Thirty-two arborvitae, six feet in height, when planted, were added along the property line. Seventeen on the east property line and then 15 on the north property line, or actually south property line there. In addition, we added notes to preserve two existing trees. One's a 24-inch ash, another is a 24-inch cherry tree, again, along that abutting property line off of Granite Street. We also added a note that there will be nine existing trees that will be removed. They're six inches or greater in caliber. That again will allow us to actually create the access drive to the parking lot from Granite Street. Again, the Existing Conditions Plan also located some additional trees that were six inches and greater along Granite Street. They're remaining. And then on the Sheet S U 3, Site Lighting Point calculation plan, I already addressed the relocation of three parking lot lights. We wanted to also address the site lighting itself for the ball field. Again, we wanted to make sure that we had proper illumination so that we could have safe play on that field. In the letter, we state that Illuminating Engineering Society of North America recommends a minimum of an average of 30-foot candles of light on the playing surface for soccer and its 50-foot candles, minimum recommendation average in the infield play for softball. And you'll see on the photometric plan itself, we are just over, I believe it's 50.8-foot candles averaged in the infield and 30.2 in the outfield. So again, we meet the criteria for the safe play on the field and we were able to achieve this by slightly adjusting the lights, again, to minimize the light contribution at the adjoining property lines. We still have a little bit of light at the property line based on the photometric study, but again, it was reduced from the previous submission. We also clarified that the ball field lights are mounted at 60 feet in height and the parking lot lights are in fact 20 feet in elevation. The ball field lights as well as the parking lot lights are full cutoff light fixtures in accordance with the City of Portsmouth zoning standards. One other item that we wanted to address was the public address system that was not recorded in this letter, however, we did issue a separate memo to that effect. We are aware that the noise ordinance, as interpreted, does not apply to softball field public events for public domain. However, because the city would, is going to be a good neighbor to the abutting properties, we wanted to address that, so we issued a separate letter as well. In the letter, in theory, we can calculate the sound of noise. We know that noise diminishes as it travels a distance away from the point source. However, we also know that you're going to have ambient noise that will contribute to the perception of sound at the property line. Ambient noise would be the vehicle sound off of Market Street Extension. We also knows that noise is also influenced by the temperature, humidity, and even wind. So rather than trying to bring forward calculations that would present a certain condition as based on ideal environments, we didn't want to represent anything that might not be true based on the conditions on a day-to-day basis. What we can report is that the public address system, just by its very nature, has controls in it to regulate the amount of sound output. This basis, the public address system that is specified as the basis of design, has a maximum peak output of 124 decibels. Threshold of pain for hearing is in between 120, 130 decibels, so I can assure you, we won't be at that maximum peak. To achieve a audible sound at the bleachers, which is about 50 feet, 55 feet away, if we had a source output at the pavilion to the bleachers and with the direction of the speakers, we can direct the sound so that it remains on the property itself and doesn't actually spill over on the abutting property, be it on the third baseline or the first baseline. There's also points within the speakers and amplifier connections that actually act as a governor. So you set maximum thresholds for the output and then you do have a volume control on the amplifier. All of these are regular, normal, usual customary measures that you, one takes when installing a public address system in this application. And during installation, we will work with the city to make sure that the sound remains on the site. Have any questions of any information?
Mr. Coker.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify something. Did you say that the, the ball field lights were 50 feet, five-zero, or 60?
Sixty, six-zero.
Sixty, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Russ Wilson to address the field operations and use.
Thank you very much. I won't repeat what was detailed at our last meeting about the schedule, other than to say, we'll play the bulk of our usage for games will be during the spring and summer seasons. We only play two games in the evening, practices or games, usually at 6:00 PM and 7:30 starts. The games finish between 9:00 and 10:00 PM, and this is the exact schedule that we've been using at Alumni Field for years, if not decades. Please keep in mind that these are mostly middle-aged men and women who play. They all have families, they all want to get home, see their families and get to bed so they can get to work the next day. So this is not people that, one, are looking to stay out late. They're just looking for an opportunity for a little exercise and recreation. In all of our fields and all of our neighborhoods throughout the city, we try to be very cognizant of the fact that we around people's homes. It just happens to be the way it is in Portsmouth. We don't have isolated fields. They're all in the middle of neighborhoods, so this is nothing new at Granite Street. We want a field to be the asset to the neighborhood, where there can be neighborhood gatherings, families have a place to go to recreate with their children, and we feel it will certainly improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I think the chairman put it best at the last meeting when he said, we were doing this, we've been doing this for a long time with very positive results. And if there are any issues at all, even the smallest issue, we'll take care of them as soon as possible. Thank you.
At this point, our presentation is complete, but we're here to answer questions that the board has.
I've got a couple drainage questions. I don't know if somebody wants to take a gander. Did you, I see on here there's a P-7. Did you do any borings or any test pits where that rain garden's proposed?
There are, there were permeability tests that were, that were done, yes.
Can we just get your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gordon Levy. I'm with Van Ness hanging in Brestler.
And the reason for my question is twofold. One is groundwater and two, do you anticipate any blasting on this site?
We are trying to avoid blasting. We don't, that's part of the reason that the site is configured the way that it is was that there is that kind of knob of ledge to the sort of south, southwesterly corner adjacent to the concessions building. And we tried to work around that to the extent practicable. What's happening with the rain garden is that, you know, it's not anticipated that there's going to be a huge amount of infiltration because like, you know, most other places in Portsmouth, we do have limited capacity for infiltration. But there's a, it's really more of a filtration treatment, storage device. There's an underdrain that connects to, to the drainage system.
But you're four feet below existing grade there. My guess is, do you know or don't know what groundwater is at that elevation? Brian, do you remember?
About the level of the bottom of the, of the rain garden.
About or it is?
They took the, they took the borings in the March-April timeframe and it was, groundwater was fairly high at that point and it was at the, at the elevation of the bottom of the rain garden. We have a separation that we have to provide to, to take credit for treatment there.
So how are you going to do that if you're already at, the bottom of that's already at the groundwater cable? How are you going to get your level of separation?
Well, we have, it's designed to meet, meet D E S standards for, for treatment.
Okay. And my other question is, was there any thought given as you, as you, as you come off of granite onto the parking area, creating a little swale to the abutting neighbor and directing that into catch basin 14?
You're talking about along their easterly property line?
Correct.
It's really going to function that way. What we are doing to improve the drainage in that area is basically replacing a catch basin generally in the location of catch basin 14. There's an existing catch basin. We're not quite sure from the survey whether that goes to a drywall or where it's connected, so we're just going to abandon it and replace it.
So that's why the location of 14 is where it is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And just so, just for the record, there's also a, a kind of silted-in swale along the southerly property line of those adjacent properties that is essentially dead flat. There's an existing swale where that drain line runs and so we're going to clean that up as a part of this project as well.
Okay. Those are my only two questions, so. Are there any?
Question. I had a question on the landscaping.
Yes.
The, the arborvitae trees that are going to be planted around what, the Oxlome property, I believe?
Yep.
Just to clarify, it says six feet in height. That's the height when planted?
Correct.
Okay. How far apart are they spaced?
Those are spaced about, about eight feet. And, you know, my experience is that we, I, we specified the Techni variety, which is Mission Arborvitae. It's a very vigorous grower and, you know, they'll get, you know, the mature size of those is more like, you know, 16 to 18 feet. So, you know, I really think we need to balance the, they'll fill in quickly and I think we need to balance the immediate effect against the, the mature size of the, of the plants. Otherwise, it becomes a real maintenance issue.
So is the expectation at eight feet that they will sort of grow in and fill in that any gaps?
Absolutely. Yeah. Within a relatively short amount of time. I'm saying, I'm thinking within, you know, two years max and probably more like the first growing season.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the board, we want to allow public comment. We would need a motion to suspend the rules. We'd need a two-thirds vote to allow public comment. I know we closed a public hearing at last month's meeting, so if that's something the board would like to, make a motion to suspend the rules to allow public comment or not?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow public comment.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. That being said, I'll now open up the public hearing. If anybody in the public, oh, excuse me, public comment, thank you.
It's a difference.
Aye, and thank you. If anybody would like to come up, if we could just get your name and address for the record.
I'm Steve Oxlome. I live at 51 Granite Street. I certainly appreciate your giving me the opportunity to talk again. I promise I won't talk as long as I did last time, so. I'd also like to express my appreciation for the Joint Building Commission and the project team because clearly they've done a lot to try to alleviate some of our concerns and we, we really do appreciate that. I did want to just touch on a couple of things on the noise side. I know that there's some discussion in, in the record or in the package associated with this project with the applicability of some of the planning ordinance, applicability to this field, specifically a couple of the exclusions, eight and nine, within the applicable paragraph. I think if you really look at those, that, most of those exclusions are for, for kind of either pre-existing conditions or one-time events or special events and that kind of thing. In fact, there's one in there that talks about recreation events that are scheduled by the school and what have you. I can tell you, I am all for all the school games that are going to go on. What I'm not necessarily in favor of is the, the men's and the co-ed leagues and that kind of thing, women's leagues late at night. That's, that doesn't really fit into the spirit of those exclusions. So I think you really have to ask whether, although the Assistant City Attorney has a position on the applicability of that, I think you all need to really think about whether that makes sense, whether it meets the spirit as well. It was interesting, at dinner tonight, we had a little bit of theory to practice on the noise. Turns out there were some kids that went to visit, that went with school and broke some windows over there. And actually, a couple of them are in custody apparently. And we were all eating dinner, the five of us, and our dinner conversation was stopped by the noise of the windows breaking. This is exactly where the ball field is going to be. So you can say that with all the, all the calculations, and I appreciate all the spherical spreading of noise and all of that, I could tell you, we heard that, those windows break very, very clearly. So I think the noise aspect really cannot be discounted. So please, please take that into consideration. And I think that we've, we've heard over and over and over again that, that most of the games all end 9:00 to 9:30, that kind of timeframe. So I don't think it would be unreasonable to put a curfew on the, the use of the field. I, I would be okay not going as early as 9:00, but I certainly don't think it needs to go to 11:00. So I think there's probably a point to compromise there that would certainly be acceptable to us. And lastly, in, in the letter that I provided that I believe was a part of your package, I certainly request and implore you to look at this with the same rigor that you would if it was a commercial entity. As a planning board, that's really, in my mind, what your, your role is. It's not as an advocate for the city and you ought to have the same rigor in evaluating this as if it was a commercial entity. So just have confidence that you'll do the right thing and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all.
Anybody else like to speak in the public comment session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bernie Peelich. I'm speaking solely as a resident of the City of Portsmouth. I'm very familiar with the Wentworth School, having been a teacher at New Franklin School for many years back in the 70s. I used to bring my track team and my softball team and my other teams from New Franklin School to Wentworth and we would, we would play on those fields. I've also been a coach of Little League and Babe Ruth League and American Legion. This is something that the city really needs. This is a wonderful proposal. This will provide recreational opportunities for the people in Osprey Landing, the children in Osprey Landing, Gosling Meadows. There is nothing north of New Franklin School where kids can get together and have a good old-fashioned ball game. I realize that this board must balance the need of the general public, City of Portsmouth and, and the children and the adults as well, because they, they need to have recreational activities, against the abutters' concerns. And truly, that's, that's a balancing test that you have to perform. In this case, I think that certainly the needs of the city outweigh the concerns of the abutter. This is a municipal zone. It has been, it was a school. It could be a fire station, it could be a police station. It was a school. When people buy property adjacent to a municipal zone, piece of property, they have to be aware of what can occur there. And this is simply something that is appropriate for a municipal zone, appropriate for that neighborhood, and certainly, from what I've heard this evening, will not have an adverse impact upon the abutters. So I urge you to vote favorably upon this. I think it's a great idea and a great replacement for Alumni Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public comment session? No? I'll now close the public comment session. Do we have, oh, Ms. Gafford.
Hi, I'd like to recommend to the planning board that we vote to grant, are we granting site plan approval? To grant site plan approval is...
Second.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Discussion on the motion. Ms. Gafford.
I would like to commend the city for going back and making some adjustments to these plans. I think that they have been improved. I'm very pleased with the additional plantings. I think that was a key issue for us. And, and so I want to commend our process. I also want to tell Mr. Oxlome that we have heard what you've said. And I hope that this works out for your family and for your neighbors. Hopefully, it will be a good project and that's why I recommended approval. And then one other thing, which is the front of the plan misspells the architectural firm's name, so you should just correct that. It's just a minor point.
Discussion on the motion, Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I note first, and first and foremost for the record, I do commend the applicant and the whole team for making the changes that they did and for coming back for another bite at the apple. However, noting the memo from our Assistant City Attorney, June 8, 2010, essentially saying, reinforcing what I said before, which the city doesn't have to follow its own rules, I still believe, and I believe very strongly, even more so now, given the comments earlier, that games start at 6:00 and 7:30, which implies that the average game is about an hour and a half. If you add an hour and a half to 7:30, that's 9:00. Taking a little bit of leeway and making 9:30. I do not believe, again, it is unreasonable for this board to, even in light of Suzanne Woodland's memo, to requ, actually require, I would ask that we require the city to establish a curfew of 9:30 for this particular application and this particular use. The reasons are numerous. I know there's no alcohol allowed on city property. All you have to do is go down to the baseball field. The alcohol's there at the Alumni Field. The alcohol's there at the alumni field. It's usually in the car, in the trunk, in the cooler. It's not as obvious as it used to be. Noise, light. What happens if... And I just want to throw something out. What happens if we wind up with a situation where the light, in fact, isn't as it's being described? That has happened in the recent past, as we recall, with an auto dealership where light spills off the property, and the people around it have been impacted and impacted severely. I will push very hard for this board to not abdicate your responsibilities to the abutters and the neighbors. Establish a 9:30 curfew. Again, if a curfew, if they're in the middle of a game, it's like a rainout. If the game is halfway, and I don't know if the rules of softball are different than baseball, but if you're more than halfway through the game and it starts to rain, the game is over. Whoever's ahead wins. I see no reason why that same thing can't happen at a curfew, 9:30. That's not unreasonable. I don't think it's a burden on the city to do that. And having lived downtown and being rather sensitive to the noise issue, I feel for the abutters. The argument that, well, the alumni field is surrounded by homes now, well, yeah, it is, but those homes have been there and the alumni field has been there for years and years and years. And the people, I would suspect, that own those homes there now bought that with the alumni field being there. These people that surround this field did not buy their homes with a baseball field next door to it. This is coming in to their environment. It is going to impact them without question. So, I don't know whether you want to make it a stipulation, but I'm urging this board, please do not abdicate your responsibilities to the abutters. And somehow, as a stipulation or something, I will request a curfew, and I'll leave it to the board.
I think I'd like to get everybody that's got a comment. I'd like to get all the comments out first.
Please.
I think that's probably the best way to do it, so... Ms. Hayden?
Well, I don't know that I'd use the auto dealership. I don't think there's any analogy there between this and lighting. Completely different situation. You know, I think, Don, for me, it has to be balanced with, there's a significant public investment going in here, and it's for... It really is for all members of the community. And, you know, to put all that kind of money into the development of the field and then reduce playability that much, we could have implications for our other fields in towns. That would be my concern. And my own feeling is 9:30 is too early. Maybe it's 10:30, but that 9:30 is just way too early.
Okay. Other comment? Mr. Blunkens, up.
Maybe a comment in the form of a question, if people know. Is it recognizing that there's, at least as I understood it from the city's perspective, a desire to sort of have a uniform policy about its fields in terms of the end time when games could go till, if I understood that?
What my point was is if, when you roll back something over here, then there may be pressure to roll it back somewhere else instead of precedent.
Exactly. Is it possible, as I understand it also, the games that are going to go on at this field are sort of organized leagues? Is it possible to tie in not a straight, always the game has to end at 9:00, but that within a certain amount of time after the conclusion of the game, the area has to be vacated? You know, I recognize it's difficult. Enforcement would be an issue, but at least as a policy, if the city's saying, yeah, we allow organized games, the game may run late and it may go till 11:00, although no later than 11:00, but if the game ends at 9:15, our policy is that within 15 minutes, or 20 minutes, or half an hour, I don't know, our policy is that everyone should vacate the city premises. Is that a potential solution?
I guess I... I understand, Don, and I agree with you, Don. I think, I look at it as two things. I think we've got the best applicant we can have in this case. We've got a business we've got a track record for, i.e. that business is Russ Wilson Softball. I played in a couple leagues. I hear from very few people that late-night games and carousing and noise is an issue. I think if it's an issue, I think we've got the best applicant to deal with it, and I think we've got a proven model that works. Russ says most games are over at 9:00 or 9:30. If a game goes to quarter or 10:00, if the neighbors repeatedly calls, my guess is the city's going to deal with it. My concern is, a little bit what Cindy spoke about, is the unintended consequence of, well, just this field, well, the guy... Well, what about that field? In my opinion, as far as I know in this city, there are no issues with softball or baseball games at these fields. I think the city does a great job, not because they're the city, but it's because a model that we know works. It's worked for 20-some-odd years. So, I'm kind of opposed to any curfews where, if it isn't an issue, Don, now we've cut off an issue that doesn't exist.
Well, I would theoretically agree with you, however, that the alumni field has been there for a long, long time.
Regardless of that, do we get a lot of complaints from neighbors?
That's not my point. My point is that there is no field there now on Granite Street, and we are being asked to make a decision and a recommendation to impact people that, absent our recommendation and absent the application, would not be impacted. Therefore, I'm saying that we have an obligation to take their needs and concerns into consideration, and it is for this field, it is for this field only, and it is for this application only. And please, don't misunderstand me. I support this. I think it's a great idea. I'm not a baseball player, but there are a lot of people that are, and it's good for the city. But what we are being asked to do is to look the other way with families that live there. And I'm just saying, put in some small, and I do consider it a small limitation, if you will. We do this all the time with all kinds of developers. I don't find this an unreasonable request.
Ms. Hayden? Oh, Ms. Gafford, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I want to just... I support that you can have your opinions. I want to address a couple of things. You said on a couple of occasions that we've advocated our responsibility to the abutters, and I want to be very clear. This board's probably gotten the city a little riled up because we asked people to make changes to what was a pretty darn good plan, and now it's a much better plan, so we haven't abdicated anything. I think we've been very, very focused on the abutters, number one. Number two, we're not looking the other way. I should tell you that this isn't about the city coming forward and us saying, well, it's the city, so okay. I think we've been tough on the city, and I'm going to tell you something. I mean, I've been over at the Wentworth School. I've checked out the property. It's an eyesore. There was the possibility that it could be sold, rezoned, commercial, because it's right there and it's on Route 1. I think this is great for the neighborhood. I live pretty close to Leary Field, not too far from Alumni Field. It's great to have a ball field around. You're right, I don't live right there, but I don't think I would mind it. And I'm thinking about the abutters, and I think this is an improvement to their neighborhood, and I don't think the noise is going to be an issue. But, when it comes to noise, we as a planning board looked at the entire municipality, and we made a decision, a decision based on what we thought was best for this community, and we set a noise time field limitation of 11:00. And we did it based on what I think was a reasoned discussion. So, to create a little special zone here, I'm not sure that that aligns with the comprehensive zoning approach that I think we as a board need to take. Nonetheless, I'm not objecting to your opinion. I am objecting to the fact that we abdicated. We didn't, and we're not looking the other way. I think we have, some of us may have bases for disagreeing in principle with you that aren't abdication or...
Just let me clarify my remarks. I said if, what I meant to say, and I apologize for not being clear, if we don't address the neighbors' concerns, the abutters' concerns, that would be abdicating our responsibilities. I'm not... I mean, the city's done a great job. I'm saying, go just that extra half a step, and let's put a curfew there, and let's protect the neighbors. I don't know about these people. 9:00, I'm asleep. I don't have television, so, you know, what's to stay up for? So, anyway.
Ms. Hayden, did you have a comment?
I... No, I was going to make some funny remark about Don, which I'll skip.
Everybody else does. Why couldn't you stop?
Mr. Rice.
I like, Ms. Gafford was, visited the site. Actually, I visited it today and looked around, and I think one of the things from an aesthetic standpoint is about 80% of that area is commercial around the outside of it. When we talk about the residents, it seems to me it obviously come down to one resident because of the way that the place is laid out, and we look at the outfield, it's Market Street Extension, and across the street is some Nolan businesses of some kind. Actually, from a baseball aesthetic standpoint, going back to my old background, I think it's a great place to tuck in a little ballpark in there, and it's going to be neat to be driving along Market Street Extension and see those lights, see the park. But addressing the concerns of the abutter, and I think really, this, the noise, the lights, the whole activity is there, primarily affects one residential lot, in my opinion. Truly impacts that one lot, but because the rest of the area, to me, even though there may be slight impacts or some kind of impact, it's distanced back. And I think, I heard an expression, "for the common good." I think the committee has spent a month going back and taking the concerns one by one and doing what is humanly and logically possible to ameliorate all of the negative impacts on the abutters' property. And I can't... I commend them for that. I understand that life for that particular resident is going to change dramatically and not in a pleasant way, but I think, again, it's the greater good, and in some impacts, perhaps having that, what could be a really neat little park next door might be a positive change. So, I think we've dwelt a lot on this board, on the negative side of this ballpark, and I, getting out there, could actually get excited about some of the positive aspects. And I think from a logical standpoint, we've done everything humanly possible to ameliorate the negative impacts on the abutter.
Do we have any other discussion? If you would like to ask the maker of the motion if that's acceptable?
I just have one more comment, and it's... Mr. Rice here just said something that just astounded me, is that life for that abutter will change dramatically. And it's nice to be able to sit here and in the abstract say that it's for the common good, but if you're that abutter, how... I just... Again, I would summarize, as I say, in summary and conclusion, I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I don't think it will cause problems. It is for this one place and this one application only, and I think just because one person is saying something does not mean that all of the abutters around it don't feel the same way, just because one person steps up to the plate and others don't. So, to the maker of the motion, I guess I would say, I would request a stipulation that, and I don't know whether we need to take a vote, but I'll turn to you for the process.
I just want to make one general comment, Don, which is whenever a development comes before this board, particularly the site review ones, it does have impact on the abutters, and it does change things. And one that just pops into mind is Atlantic Heights and the new development there. When we approve site plans, it's not out of callousness, but it does impact the abutters. When you take a vacant piece of property or you take a building, you know, and knock it down and put up a new one, it does impact the abutters, period. I mean, that is a fact of life, and that's, you know, our job, which I think we typically do quite well, and I think we've done well here, is to try and balance those things.
I would agree, and I am...
Oh, good, stop right there.
But, but, I am merely asking this board to take that final step and to protect the abutters by putting in a reasonable curfew. And therefore, I'll turn to the planning director or the chair to see what is the best way to handle that.
Well, the maker would have to amend.
We... M. L., you already know the answer, so...
Yeah, I don't think I'm willing to amend my motion, but certainly, the board could not approve the motion, and then we'd come back and see whether that was the appetite, so...
Repeat that again?
What would happen is, let's say everybody wanted your stipulation, then my motion would fail, and somebody else would have to make a motion, presumably with your stipulation in it. But I'm not willing to add a different curfew.
So, then we will vote on the...
On the original motion.
Original motion, and then I will offer an amendment?
Depends.
Well...
Only if the motion fails.
Only if it fails.
Right.
So, I'm...
So, if the motion passes, we're on to public hearings.
But in fairness to you, Don, we've heard you. So, I think people would be effectively voting on whether or not to include your stipulation. If they vote for my motion, then I think they're saying no, and if they vote against it, they are saying yes.
Well, then, let me try one more time. Is there a mechanism within Robert's Rules of Order to have this voted on?
Chair, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion, have him make the motion with his stipulation. We can vote on that and...
Would it not be possible to make a motion to amend the main motion?
I would prefer...
Well, that's what we're discussing.
Right. I would prefer that we vote on...
I favor that.
I believe Ms. Gafford has kind of gotten through the weeds by saying, if we approve this motion, we've effectively denied your request, if you will. I believe that that would be...
And then, that's the end of the line?
That would pretty much be the end of the line, yes.
Hmm. I better study up on my Robert's Rules.
I've got...
You have a copy of...
I do. I do.
And, Don, just as a point of kind of common sense here, I haven't heard anyone speak in favor of what you're saying. I've heard the opposite, so that might be an indication.
Well, by the same token, Ms. Hayden, I don't think anyone has had an opportunity to vote on that.
And now we will.
And I believe that the vote is somewhat weighted in a way in which my request is going to be minimized, if you will?
I don't think minimized...
I would prefer, honestly, I would prefer to find some mechanism that would allow us to go on record and say, okay, up or down?
We will. This vote will determine, up or down.
Well, not... Okay.
So, I think everybody's heard, and I think we're all kind of, we've kind of reached the same point. We've got our variety. We didn't rubber stamp it. You know, the city's worked hard. I think the abutter even agreed that, you know, substantive changes were made, so...
All of which I agree with.
And I think we've got a proven model. We've got a business that has been in business for a long time, so I don't want to belabor the point.
Well, then, I will say that I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay. So, I'll...
I just want to raise a question. I think that Ms. Hayden had suggested earlier in private to me that we want to talk about a construction management plan for this. Is that something you want to...
Right, and we could add that as a stipulation, but they said they've already started on it. They're going to do it, and I think it actually might be a note on the plan somewhere that it's being done, and they're saying, yes, it's already on a note as a plan.
That being said, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And the chair votes aye. So, thank you. We all look forward to it, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Another nine to one.
I'm surprised I didn't hear you screaming as the countdown.
We'll now move on to public hearings.
That doesn't mean we have to...
Tonight, we have three public hearings. I'll read in the first application, which is application A. The application of Eugene C. Bergeron, owner. Her property located at 20 Columbia Street, requesting site plan approval to pave and stripe a grassed area behind an existing structure and to install a rain garden with related paving, lighting utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on accessory map 156, is Lot 22, and lies within the general residence C District. He's here tonight on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bernie Peelich. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Bergeron. 1824 Columbia Street has been a four-unit multifamily for many years. It was previously owned by Mr. Bergeron's father. Mr. Bergeron has acquired the property. If any board members have driven by, you know that it certainly is in need of repair and a facelift. Mr. Bergeron has done extensive work on the inside of the building, and he is now turning to the outside of the building. to the outside of the building, seeking to improve the site itself. Why we're here for a, a small residential use like this is because he intends to pave the backyard. In the past, the backyard has been a quote-unquote " lawn" where vehicles have parked. There's adequate parking for all of the people that live there. He's intending to pave it, landscape it, provide a rain garden. Under the new site review ordinance, this requires approval from, from this board. There were some comments, and Rick certainly can, can fill the board in, but in the, in the planning department memo, there were concerns about the area in front of the house. Those have been worked out. Mr. Bergeron met with David Defosis of Public Works in the TAC Committee. A revised plan has been prepared by Alex Ross, and he'll go over it in a minute. Everybody seems to be on board with the new plan. It's certainly an improvement, will prevent any parking in front of the building. It will maintain the five-foot sidewalk along its, its present course, and this is just a great project, will certainly improve a piece of property in the city of Portsmouth that certainly needs it. All of the stipulations now have been met, all concerns have been addressed. I don't believe there's any reason to delay action on this now, and hopefully Rick will confirm that. And so we're simply asking to, for the board's approval this evening. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Alex Ross, the site engineer.
Alex Ross, with Ross Engineering. And as Bernie was stating earlier, we did add some clarity to, one of the questions was, what's going to happen in front of the house? So I'd like to pass out some, some color sketches that should clarify that. So, to start, I'd just like to go over some basic information on the lot. The lot size is 8,605 square feet, or .198 acres. It's one lot back from Islington Street, on the west side of Columbia Street, opposite the breadbox. And as Bernie said, this has been a multifamily building for years. And recently, the owner has been improving the inside. Now he has the opportunity to improve the site, and provide safe, adequate parking. A small backyard grass parking lot has been utilized for a long time, and will be improved by replacing it with an asphalt parking lot. We've designed a rain garden to comply with the city's stormwater regulations. This will better control stormwater runoff, and recharge the aquifer. The rain garden plants have been selected and placed by a professional landscape designer for this particular site. A drainage study was prepared and submitted, and it does assure all city regulations have been met. Back at our TAC meeting, the committee recommended approval with five stipulations. And I'd like to just take, take a minute to go through those concerns. Number one and two had to deal with parking lot lighting. Those have been addressed on Sheet Four, with notes five and six. The third stipulation had to do with pavement in front of the building, and that's what we've just been discussing. A detail has been added onto Sheet Three, which clearly shows, the intent there is to make four-foot wide paved walkways with a five-foot wide sidewalk, that really matches up with the sidewalk to the north and the south. Item four had to do with consistent labeling on the rain garden, and that has been revised. And the fifth and last stipulation had to do with underground storage tank. We've added Note Six on Sheet Two to address that. Also, in your supplemental package, we did include a waiver request letter. The site is serviced by Town Water and Sewer with overhead electric. No changes are proposed there. And that's what the majority of the items in the waiver request letter had to deal All these improvements that we've shown on this application, and in the plans, meet city regulations, and will provide safe, maintainable off-street parking for more than the required amount of spaces. Neighborhood support has been shown by the six abutter signature letters, which were submitted in favor of the application. In summation, we feel that the proposed improvements and application are complete and worthy of approval tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Rice?
Looking at the green markation on the plant-
Yes.
It may seem like a stupid question, but, is that grass? Or, it almost looks like, the little, the little symbol you have there, looks like it's wetland.
No, that's grass.
Okay.
Ms. Gefford?
I just, could you just confirm whether or not you're removing any trees to put in the asphalt in the back?
No.
I didn't think you were, okay. Thank you.
I got to say that, in a former life, I used to do a lot of engineering work down in Lexington and Weston, Mass. And lots like these actually caused me a lot of concern, to be honest. Drainage studies are not required. Has any thought been given to anything other than paving out back?
We, we did look at, at a couple of different options. We did toss around pervious pavement, but we felt this, this was the best solution for this small lot, and this application. And we did prepare this extensive drainage study. We actually proved that, for all the storms, there's a decrease in stormwater runoff. So we've-
Humor me and tell me how that happens. How it's decreased.
Well, when you prepare a drainage study, what you want to do is review pre-development and post-development. And the, the big change here is, we've added a lot of pervious surface to the backyard. That's all collected into a rain garden, which, in a way, acts as a detention pond. So we've given enough volume there to hold even a 50-year storm. Contain that, and then slowly release it, so that the rate of runoff is the same or less than the requirement for the different storms.
And it looks like you did a test pit out there?
A percolation test, yes.
And what did you find from that?
The percolation information is shown on Sheet One. The depth of 24 inches, this is Note Five on Sheet One. The depth of 24 inches, we hate, we found a rate of four inches per hour. We also did some, some test pits, and found there was a semi-restrictive layer, just about a foot and a half below where we're proposing the bottom of our rain garden. So, currently, this, this is used as a parking area. And even in the big storms we've had earlier this year, you get a little bit of ponding, and the soil can accept it. It's a decent perk rate, and it goes into the ground.
Okay, and tell, and tell me how the drainage works, because I can't see the contours off the site. What does the drainage do when it hits this parking lot?
As it hits the new parking lot?
Yes.
The drainage flows to the southeast. The new parking lot is created such that the flow will come off the parking lot and go into the rain garden. And that, that's following the current drainage flow. The flow is really from off Islington to the south, in a general manner.
Okay. I just, I have a really hard time with these small lots that don't require the overview that a, a commercial site plan would, and it just, it doesn't, just doesn't seem right to me that that needs to be paved. You know, for the few times a year, you're going to plow it, it's not like a road that's going to be driven on, that, you know, a nice stone gravel down there, or, I don't know, that's just one man's opinion, but-
You mean something that would be more pervious?
Yeah, I just, I just have a hard time making that whole backyard black, and I think, you know, I look at Don's concern on the last application about noise, I think, in my opinion, I, I think this, I think that paved backyard has a, could have a huge impact on the abutters. So, I would agree, a parking lot that services Jackson Gray Building or the hospital, but, you know, this will probably be used by, what is it, eight cars twice a day? It just doesn't seem to me that asphalt paving back there is the best solution. So, that's just my opinion, you can certainly do what you want, but, anyway, that's my only comment. So, Ms. Hayden?
Just a drainage question, follow-up. What happens to the water when it hits the driveway along the, the driveway, as it enters the parking lot? Is that sheeted to, or sloped to flow towards that rain garden, too?
No, you're talking about the driveway next to Columbia Street?
The driveway that comes in perpendicular off Columbia? Yeah. Along the side of the building that leads to the parking lot?
Yeah, most of, most of that flow goes back to Columbia Street, the way it currently does. There's, there's a high point back there, almost at the, at the rear of the building, and from there back goes to the rain garden, but forward goes to Columbia Street, as it does today.
And that, is that, oh, it's, oh, it's asphalt now, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's actually quite a reduction in asphalt in the front half of the property. There's over 330 square feet of pavement that's proposed to be removed.
Moved, right, okay.
Yes.
I have another question, which I don't know is for Bernie or for you, but it's about abutters. Which, which is just that, I see there are a number of letters from abutters, and I, I just, the most immediate abutters, Smith, and Gailey, and Burke, maybe, and Bolton, there were some immediate abutters that didn't have letters, and I just wondered what that If anything.
Tom Smith came to TAC and spoke in favor of it. Most of the abutters, this is a condominium here-
Yeah.
Most of them are not residents, they're, they're multifamily residences, who all have basically parking behind, but nobody opposed it whatsoever. We've, we've not heard any negative comments whatsoever about the proposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'll open up the public hearing, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against the application? Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My, my recommendation in the memo had been to vote to postpone, but my recommendation, having received the new information, which I actually received earlier today, would be to, for the board to grant site plan approval for the plan as revised on June 17th, 2010, with the following stipulation, that a note be added to the site plan stating that there will be no parking in front of the building, or on the paved area on the south side of the building.
Okay.
Come on over.
Somebody make a motion? Oh, and second it?
Second.
I'll second it, but-
Second? Oh. Mr. Blankensop, second it, discussion on the motion? Mr. Co-
Just a quick question, on the stipulation of parking on the south side of the building. Now, if I, I just want to make sure I understand that clearly. On Page One, it shows a porch, on the south side of the building, it shows a porch, and then the term asphalt with some arrows alongside it. Is that the area you're speaking of?
That's the area, yes.
Okay.
That was discussed at TAC, and it was a concern of Dave Defosis, that in addition to the area in front, which has been now delineated with grass, to the area between the building and the south side, the south lot line there, not be-
Is that currently grass, or asphalt?
It's currently asphalt, and is proposed to stay asphalt for the time being, yeah.
If I could make a suggestion, I'm not, my track record isn't too good on stipulations tonight, but I'll try again. Remove the asphalt?
I think that the, as I understand, that area, I think under the porches is used for trash receptacles and that sort of thing right now, and so that's-
Yes, and, and that, that was considered, and, and kind of talked about at TAC, for maintenance and trash removal, the owner would like to keep that pavement there.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
I was just interested in hearing more, John, about your drainage concerns, and how, is, is there a way to address that, other than being gravelled, the pieces? You know, grass gravel, or pavers, I guess, are the options.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I just-
If I could, I'd like to add a little bit to that. Am I speaking out of line?
Make it brief, we shouldn't even allow it, but make it brief.
Sure. You know, this is a condominium setting, surrounded by condominiums, with a majority of the lots completely paved. This is the only one with a rain garden. We did consider gravel, and even gravel, while it's not completely impervious, is close to being impervious, and, and a rain garden or a detention pond would still be necessary. So, we did take that into account.
Okay, thank you. Again, I've, I've, you know, I've done a lot in Massachusetts, where they have drywells, or they come up with alternate methods, and I, you know, Don, you don't strike out all the time, you make comments that we all hear, and I mean that. I, you know, I, I don't know, I just, I just think you add a lot of blacktop to an area that maybe doesn't necessarily need it. I know it's the easiest surface, it's easy to pave, it's easy to, to plow. I look at driveways that are 200 feet long that are gravelled to people's homes that they plow. I don't know, the rain garden is great, I, I won't disagree with that, but I just wanted to make my comments known, and I think without the rain garden, it would be detrimental. The rain garden certainly helps, so.
Thank you.
How's that?
Well, I guess I could follow up, and maybe echo what you're saying. I, you know, I feel like we've, we've spent a lot of time on these issues, and the stormwater situation in New Hampshire is just getting exponentially worse. I mean, as Donald has said at almost every single meeting, we've had, what, three, several hundred-year storms within the past few years? So, you know, doing your data analysis based on a 50-year storm, only going to get us so far, you know? And, obviously, we're in the middle of the city, and, and we have a lot of blacktop and other coverage, that we're trying to minimize, in whatever way that we can, whether it's grass, or whatever, open space. So that, you know, that's where it comes from, is a larger vision for trying to address our stormwater situation.
So, Ms. Hayden?
Yeah, I, I think it's a tough one, I mean, I, I think, you know, here we have these property owners, they're trying to improve their property, you know, they're trying to make it nice, and, and, and what they're proposing to do is in keeping with that neighborhood, and I- And I, I guess like, like John, I mean, I think that we're moving in the right direction because we're including the rain garden.
Exactly.
And you know, we've got to kind of see how that phase works for a while. So, I mean, I, I'm ready to vote in favor of this, but I, I know, you know, Mr. Drainage here always comes up with these, you know.
We're learning.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'd be willing to vote in favor of it, but I think, you know, it's a, a bigger issue for another day of whether we should change our regs to 200-year storms. I mean, 25-year storms.
Right.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I ask you a question about the, the no parking on the south side of the building? How is that enforced ultimately? It does appear there's a curb cut there, so I mean, it, it sort of intuitively acts like a driveway or looks like a driveway. Is there any requirement that it be signed, no parking or anything like that? Just to clarify, or is it just that that's a stipulation on the approval?
Well, signing it would, would make it clear, but I, that was my, I was just expecting that the, having the, that as a stipulation approval would take care of it. We could put a sign if you felt more comfortable about that.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we want to put a sign.
I agree.
Because, you know, I mean, as a practical matter, we'd have signs everywhere, don't park in front of this driveway. So, I, I think, you know, the reason it's seen as a stipulation, if it becomes a problem, then we have something we can go and force.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chairman is going to vote opposed and the motion passes, I think, eight to one. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks for leaving.
Misserillo's company, Don. We'll move on to the second of three public hearings, which is item B, the application of Lang and Long Meadow Development LLC owner for property located at 126 Lang Road, requesting amended site plan review to relocate one of five proposed multi-unit dwelling units on the site with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessor map 291, has lot 1-1 and lies within the Garden Apartment Mobile Home District. He's here tonight on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bernie Peelich. I'm here on behalf of Lang and Long Meadow Development LLC. Those of you who were here in 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, recall that this was an approved project, which approvals are still valid. What we're here for this evening is to slightly amend the site plan to relocate one of the five multi-unit dwellings. This was a site which was a former junkyard and, as you know, an extreme amount of excavation and removal of buried buses and cement mixers and everything else occurred out there and a lot of environmental issues were dealt with. And, and as a result, it, at this point in time, is advantageous for the developer to relocate one of the buildings to a new location, which is more appropriate, and that's why we're here. We appeared before the technical advisory committee on June 1st. They unanimously voted to recommend approval of the amended site plan. And they had a number of stipulations, I think there were about 20 of them, which they added to the October 16th, 2003 planning board approval stipulations. Before I turn it over to Corey Caldwell from MSC, I would like to introduce Ed Hubenek, who is here from Lang and Long Meadow, and also indicate with regard to stipulation number 12, a memorandum of understanding will be required regarding plowing for Long Meadow Road extension. I submitted that to the city attorney's office last week and I have not heard back, but I assume that it is acceptable. We have agreed and put in writing that we will plow and maintain Long Meadow Road extension until such time as it is accepted by the city. That being said, I will turn it over now to Corey and, and let him go forward.
Thank you, Bernie. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Corey Caldwell from MSC, civil engineers and landscapers. As Bernie summarized, there is 117 units here proposed. Also with those units is a clubhouse, a new access drive, new extension of Long Meadow Road to the property. There would then be a through road through the property out to Lang Road, so it would be continuous loop access serving these new residential units. The city has determined that this application qualifies for the amended site plan approval process. What that means is the plans were prepared under the previous zoning ordinance. However, the new site review regulations do apply and the plans were prepared under those new site review regulations. Since this project was approved in 2005, there has been five changes to the site. Water main was extended down Lang Road to this property where water valves were stubbed for a future connection. The retention pond, shown on the colored drawing here, and we do have a colored drawing that we could, we'll pass around, you can follow around the colors here. There's an 11 by 17 colored drawing in this packet that we're passing around now, so when I refer to colors, you'll know the features that we're referring to. There was a retention pond shown as olive green in your handout that was excavated as part of the junkyard cleanup. Also, there was a foundation installed, frost walls, footings for the foundation for the clubhouse. The removal of woods roads, change of topography as part of the junkyard cleanup. And the edge of wetlands have changed. The plans before you do show a recently delineated edge of wetlands by a certified soil scientist and field located by my office. Those are essentially the five changes to the site since your last approval of this These plans are very similar to that which was proposed in 2005. There are really only two major differences. One, the residential buildings, the structures have been mirror imaged and there's been some slight movement of the structures, very slight. They're essentially the same position as they were five years ago. There are now 16 internal parking spaces in each of the structures. Previously, there were far less. This eliminates the need for many exterior on-grade parking spaces. Under the old proposal, there was 132 exterior on-grade parking spaces. Under this new revision, there are 100 exterior on-grade parking spaces, so we've eliminated the need for a lot of pavement under this proposal. Secondly, due to the changes in topography, the site has been regraded, which essentially changed some of the drainage. Same basic concept applies to the old design, and that is, there are two detention ponds proposed, shown as the dark green on your color drawing. Detention Area 2 is behind Building 2. That collects all the stormwater runoff from the center of the cul-de-sac northward. Detention Area 1, on the southerly part of the site, collects all the runoff from the center of the cul-de-sac southward. Both detention areas are sloped at the bottom toward the headwalls, the low points, where the runoff is carried to an outlet control structure. From there, runoff is outlaid via a large 24-inch HDPE pipe to a riprap apron, eventually to a level spreader where it was slowly released back into the property on the easterly side. Same basic function. What we're doing is taking all the stormwater, collecting it in two basins, channeling it to a level spreader, and then releasing it back into the wetlands, shown as the yellow on your color drawing. When doing so, we're actually reducing off-site runoff in every storm event. That is so indicated in the drainage study that was turned in previously to the technical advisory committee in the planning department. Before you should be a 12-sheet set of drawings. I won't go through each sheet, won't bore you with the details, but basically that 12-sheet set of drawing addresses existing features, grading and drainage, utilities, erosion control, how we're protecting the environment, lighting, landscaping, Long Meadow Road improvements and extensions. Again, this project proposes the extension of Long Meadow Road to this property line. Long Meadow Road would be extended by approximately 400 feet to serve public access to this The Long Meadow Road would then continue through the site, right in the middle of the site, you'll see a cul-de-sac adjacent to the clubhouse. There's a boulevard entrance at each of the entrances to the site, entrance and exit points. There'd be a boulevard entrance near the property line at the extension of Long Meadow Road, and then there'd be a boulevard entrance at the entrance or exit point to Lang Road. Essentially, this serves as through traffic. The cul-de-sac in the middle is not needed for turnaround, it's mainly for access to the clubhouse. So, traffic could come in either Lang Road or Long Meadow Road, travel through the site and out to the other road. The roads provide all the services, sewer, water, gas, electric, all services come from either Lang or Long Meadow Road. Also, we're proposing a landscape berm along the eastern property line. The purpose of this berm is to give this development some screening from a commercial property out front. Between Lafayette Road and this property is a, is another commercial piece of property with some proposed development. And this berm, which is five to six feet in height, would have a lot of greenery planted in it, which would visually separate this property from the commercial development in the front. The planning department has thoroughly reviewed the plans, the supporting data. In your packet we just handled out entitled, "Planning Board Meeting Handout of Several Documents Addressing Previously Raised Concerns." Those concerns include, first, a draft of a letter to the planning director addressing the developer's intent to enter into a construction management plan with the city and that the developer will pay for the services of a private consultant to monitor and enforce the construction management plan. Secondly, as Attorney Peelich indicated, there's a memorandum of understanding, which is essentially the applicant's agreement to plow Long Meadow Road extension until it is accepted as a public street. Thirdly, there are catalog cuts of the lights we intend to use on this proposal. On sheet three of three of those catalog cuts, very bottom of the page, you'll see IESNA classifications. And the classification indicates that the lights are cutoff optics. What that essentially means is these lights are dark sky friendly. To reinforce that, we've included an email from the lighting consultant indicating that cutoff optics essentially means dark sky friendly. There's the 11 by 17 colored drawing highlighting the essential features of our proposal. And then there's an architectural rendering colored also of the proposed structures. As indicated, there are five structures and a clubhouse. All of the structures would look like that architectural rendering or similar. I believe these revisions are minor in nature, as this was approved five years ago. Myself, the applicant, or Attorney Peelich would be happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
Corey, I'm assuming that the, the Long Meadow Road extension will be built to city standards?
Correct.
And then, what's the difference between a detention pond and a retention pond?
I'm going to let the engineer explain that to you, who designed this retention pond, John Lorden from my office.
Thank you.
John Lorden from MSC, that retention pond was put in place at the time that they were doing some ledge removal. The idea about, between the two is a detention pond will hold some stormwater back and allow it, the peak flow to be reduced as it's running offsite. A retention pond is going to hold that water and eventually.
And act like a pond.
And act like a pond, correct.
And so, since you designed it, just a follow-up question then, it says the existing detention pond will be filled in and made to work as a wetland. What, what does that mean exactly?
We'd like to move forward with working with DES to try to either create some wetlands there or fill that. That isn't used, it's not part of the drainage analysis. The two detention ponds are part of the drainage design. That retention was to hold sediment during the blasting operations.
So, so wait a minute, so now I've confused myself. It says the existing detention pond.
That is, excuse me, I think that's our mistake in the plan. We should change that to retention.
Okay, good, now I get it.
Okay.
All right, and so, so then a follow-up to that then, which is, since that, that mitigation hasn't been approved by DES yet, what will happen to that retention pond if, if they don't decide it can be a functioning mitigate, mitigating wetland?
We haven't entered discussions with them yet, so at this point, it, it functions as it does to retain additional water. There's very little water going to it. It was, the site was designed during the blasting operations to have water flow there to catch that. Right now, there's very little water actually heading to that. The site is designed to go towards the detention ponds.
So, so my, and my question is not just to, so you know where I'm going, it's not driven by drainage issues, it's driven more by public safety, that what, what will happen? One, maybe it will collect more water after this is built out, or maybe it will collect less, I don't know. But if it stays in its current state of acting as a retention pond, if you can't come to agreement with DES, what kind of safety measures would be put in place so kids don't fall in and drown, basically?
We had discussed putting a fence around it for, you know, if DES will allow us to fill it, it's not, it's a man-made wetland, it shouldn't be a long process, it's less than five years.
So, would you have any problem at this point in the process if we modified that stipulation that basically if, that it be fenced for, for safety reasons if it doesn't become a wetland ultimately?
Yes, we would agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coker?
Just a curiosity question. In terms of, of environmental remediation, I'm, I'm sure there was tons of stuff out there. What was that process to make sure that that, the land was not like a superfund site or something like that? Did you drill and test and, I mean, I'm just curious, that's all.
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, Ed Hubenek from Lang and Long Meadow Development. When the owner of the property cleaned the site, they, they did four groundwater wells, tested the groundwater before. And then, as they removed all the material on site, they tested, they did testing if it looked bad, smelled bad, and then they tested the ground, after everything was removed off the site, they tested the groundwater wells again. So, that's the, that's where we are with that.
So, there wasn't like an EPA supervision or anything like that?
No.
It was just send samples to a lab and?
Send samples to a lab. The environmental engineers were there every day while they were taking the junk off the site. The only thing they actually, type of materials they removed were tires, metal pots, metal pieces, fenders, axles, brake, brake calipers and things like that, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. Geffert?
Hi, I have a question for the applicant or owner. When, what are your plans in terms of construction?
If we get a, an approval tonight, we'll start designing the, we'll go full, full speed into the architectural designs of the buildings and the interiors, working with the planning staff, and we're anticipating a spring 2011 start.
Questions for the applicant? I got a question for the, the civil engineer. How many cubic yards of material are you bringing in for this project?
I don't have that number.
A lot, right? I mean.
Yeah, there's quite a bit, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm really disappointed, really disappointed that the erosion control plan that I look at, to me, looks like it's just a little single-family lot with just a layer of silt fence. I don't see, I see some 10, 12, 15-foot cut fills. It's all going to be new material, there's no erosion stabilization called out. I don't see much in the way of stone check dams, I don't see, I just don't, I'm very, very, very disappointed in the erosion control drawing with the amount of fill that's, that's coming in here, that I've got 15-foot slopes that are being filled, I've got silt fence beh- are being filled, I've got silt fence behind detention ponds. It almost looks like somebody didn't even look at the erosion control plan. So, the engineering, the grades seem fine, it's just, my biggest concern of any of these projects that are about the wetlands is the erosion control plan, and I thought there might have been another one, but there's only one. Am I missing something? Are we just doing a layer of silt fence and that's about it?
That is the plan.
You don't have any concerns with a 15-foot fill of material that won't be stabilized for two, three weeks, that a layer of silt fence will contain that?
We can add some stabilization blankets during the process until it's compacted or until it's vegetated.
And there's no call out for riprap on these steep slopes in the back? They're just going to be vegetated, and how are they going to be mowed?
I don't know if they're going to be mowed.
And you think those slopes in back of building, Building Four, where it's 15 feet, it looks like it's about a two to one, that that'll hold vegetation by itself?
We can add a blanket to secure it.
Nothing's changed from the plan that you approved in 2005. I guess it was acceptable back then.
I wasn't on this board at that point.
I know you weren't, I know you weren't. But, yeah, that's what was approved.
Milk was a dollar fifty a gallon back then, too.
And nobody, and nobody raised the issue at TAC, but we'll be happy to look at it.
Then let the engineer tell me that what I'm saying is unfounded, that one row of silt fences...
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying that we haven't changed anything with regard to erosion control from the previous approval plan.
I understand that, does that mean that it was right back then?
Excuse me?
Does that mean that it was right back then?
No, I'm not saying that.
Those are my questions.
Chairman?
Yes.
Did you get a satisfactory answer to your questions?
No, I didn't. Not to my, I'm just one person, I'm not, I'm not the board.
Well, I am not an engineer, but I respect your opinion. You're a much better construction base of knowledge than I am, so if you're not satisfied, then I'm not satisfied.
Well, if the engineer says he's satisfied, it says stamped on the drawings, I'm just making my concerns known, I guess is what I'm trying to do, so.
Well, if you have suggestions, we'd be happy to consider them.
I would have hoped that they would have come from the engineer record that would have done this, not a suggestion from a board member.
Well, the reason that he didn't change anything was that had it already been approved, and it wasn't part of the amended...
Okay, and obviously, his design that he has, he's satisfied with, so. I just brought some concerns up, that's all.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Koker.
I'd actually like to follow up. I want to make sure that I'm clear about what the engineer is proposing to do specifically to address your concerns. And this is more for the record than anything else.
Sure, we'd be happy to add a blanket on the side when it's installed. That blanket will help additional runoff. When runoff is coming on, it'll keep it from running into the detention ponds. We do have a note on the plan that things will be seeded within 72 hours on the steep cuts. We can add some mulch and tackifier to that as well, to help speed the process.
Okay. And the silt fencing, did I hear you say earlier that you would increase that, or? I just want to make sure I, either what I heard or didn't hear, that's all.
No, if a double silt fence would help in the areas of the base of the steep slopes, we'd be happy to add that.
Okay, thank you, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Blunkett.
I'm sorry, you may want to just step there, just to clarify. When you say you add a blanket, I guess two questions. What is a blanket, number one? And then, number two, where are you going to add it?
On the steeper slopes, typically above three to one, you add a, like a fabric that helps, you know, if, before vegetation is established, it still can grow up through the fabric, but rain and runoff will not carry the seeds and pull it away, so that growth can be vegetated and stabilize it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak to or against the application. Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. I think, given the documentation that was submitted tonight, we could eliminate my recommended stipulation, number two, regarding documentation, dark sky friendly lighting. The number one, which says existing detention pond, we can change to existing retention pond, and I think we could move that down to the second group of stipulations, which is to be completed prior to occupancy, not prior to building permit. And then, a third item, I had actually requested this in a conversation with someone from the development team, and it didn't get in there. I would like to add a stipulation that the labels on the residential structures be changed to conform to the zoning ordinance's prohibition on more than eight dwelling units per dwelling. The applicant is well aware of this issue, and we discussed this in our planning board workshop earlier this evening about changes to the zoning ordinance, but currently, the zoning ordinance does not allow more than eight dwelling units per dwelling, and the plans show 24-unit residential buildings. Just want to make sure that those labels, that was something that was, for whatever reason, was passed over in prior approvals, I want to make sure this is clarified, so that it doesn't appear that the planning board is approving a 24-unit dwelling when that's not allowed by zoning.
Mr. Koker.
And an additional stipulation, or stipulations, to incorporate the engineer's agreement about the blanket and the double silt fence and whatever else I'm not remembering, so.
Is it? Do we have a motion? We don't have a motion. We don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just amending what I had written in my memo.
I heard stipulation.
Maybe I nodded off for a couple minutes.
I'll hold that until we actually have a motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulations for purposes of discussion, although I don't know that I'm ready to vote in favor of this tonight. And so, that motion would be, the 12 stipulations as listed by the department minus number two, which has been addressed, and number one will move to the to-be-completed-prior-to-occupancy list, and it will also, number, what was number one will be revised to read retention, not detention, and add the stipulation, which Rick will now articulate for the record, about the number of units per building.
Well, I think simply to, that the stipulations say the labels on the residential structures on the plans shall be changed to conform to the zoning ordinance's prohibition on more than eight dwelling units per dwelling.
Well said, and that's now part of my motion.
Do you have a second?
A second for discussion.
Second, discussion on the motion. Ms. Hayden.
I think you raise a very valid concern, which was not on my radar, but now that it is, and I look at this, I don't know that I feel comfortable voting for this tonight just by adding a few stipulations that we're suggesting, when I don't know that this erosion control plan is up to snuff. And I don't know that we should be tinkering at the edges here tonight in a board meeting saying, "Do this, do that." I wonder how other people feel about, do we want a revised erosion control plan before we can vote on this?
Mr. Koker.
I think that's a very interesting statement, because I feel much the same way. It was not on my radar. I was here when this was approved, however many years ago, I think Paige probably was too, and it, as I recall, and I could be very wrong, this, I recall this as a much flatter application. Literally, it's almost like an open field. And our concerns at that time were, as I recall, the Berry Brook watershed and all of that. And now that this comes up, and it is on our radar, I think it's, I think if we can't deal with it satisfactorily through stipulations, I would agree with Cindy that we should probably get a better erosion control plan, maybe table it or postpone it for a month or whatever we have to do procedurally to do that. So, I would be in complete agreement. Let the record show.
Your motion was to...
Well, my motion was to approve, but I would, I could withdraw that motion if, depending upon how other board members feel. And again, I go back to, that is a really steep draw, right to the edge of wetlands. And I don't know how others, now we know how Don and I feel, and I don't know how others feel.
Ms. Geffert.
I don't disagree. I think you forgot about the, one other stipulation would be the existing, now I'm getting confused, but the existing pond and the fencing. I'm wondering whether the board would want to give up, I'm just wondering whether there's a mechanism so that what a developer may be concerned about is, they've looked at it, and they said yes, but for this one issue, and then we come back with that one issue solved, and then everything else is opened up again. In other words, I'm wondering if there's a way for this board to say, "Yes, except as to this, so you're approved with these stipulations, you've got to come back to us, though, for final, as to this one item." And that's more just so that there's some box around it.
Bernie, did you have a question or a comment?
We have no problem submitting a revised erosion control plan to the satisfaction of the chairman or Public Works or whatever. We're totally blindsided by this. This was, this was never an issue when it was approved the last time, and when we went to TAC this time, and had we known that there were concerns, and there were no concerns addressed in the memo, we certainly would have dealt with them. If you want a revised erosion control plan, we'll do one up and submit it to the satisfaction of City Engineer, David Defosis, whomever you wish. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for your eagle eye, because I totally hadn't noticed that all those lines close together.
If somebody asked me, I'd like to postpone this and have this applicant come before us next month.
Right.
I have all the faith in TAC, I have all the faith in D P W, but this board, every member on this board brings a little, something quirky and different, and I think everything else on this is fine. I think the buildings are beautiful. I just, wow, I mean, it's...
Yeah, and it's certainly nothing against the applicant, you know, we're aware that time has passed, and we're not trying to make life difficult, but I think we've all become, as a board, much more aware of environmental issues even within the past few years. So, I noticed, for instance, huge focus on fertilizer, which is something that, you know, we've talked about a bit on the board of trying to discourage fertilizer usage. It's just one of those things that we've changed in the recent past, so, you know.
Ms. Hayden?
But it's a slippery slope.
I think, literally.
Right.
I think that you're right, Paige, that practices have changed, and what was like common practice five years ago is not common practice today.
And it's partly our own awareness, too, as a board.
Hold on. Bernie, did you have a comment?
We have no problem with it being continued as long as you tell us what you want, and as long as it's related to somehow, to the erosion control plan, I guess.
Well, I think based upon the discussion up here, quite frankly, is, I would expect that there could be a lot of things done to improve what's in front of us. I'll leave it up to the engineer of record to do that, but it looks like a plan that was done five years ago. And it's not a slight, it's just, I mean, you've seen in five years what this board has done, what technology's done, and I just think...
But that was a plan, it was approved. I mean, I don't want to get into a long debate, but that plan is approved, and we could go ahead and build it, and we have...
I understand that, and the application before us is...
Is to move one building.
Utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Isn't that how it reads? Isn't that part of a site improvement?
Well, if it relates to the moving of the one building, yes. You know, if we're going to reopen and tell us we've got to reapply again, then we'll probably go with the old plan.
Didn't you just say you didn't have an issue with doing that?
Well, I don't know what you're looking for. It started out...
We're looking for an updated erosion control plan.
Okay, if that's it, fine. I said we'll provide that.
And that, we agreed to that five minutes ago.
Okay. If that's all it is, no problem, we'll see you next month. I just heard from you that there may be other things that I haven't heard.
I said that there were other things?
Well, you said, from what the board said, there may be other issues.
I said we all bring something different to this board, I'd like multiple eyes to look at it, that's all I said.
Fine.
Ms. Hayden.
I have a question for Mr. Tantor. We are applying our new site regs to this, right?
Yes.
Our new site review regs. Okay, so that has changed. That's all I wanted to know. Different site review regs back then.
I guess I'd like to, at this point, after Mr. Koker's comments, get a motion on the table.
Just trying to figure out which way do we want to go here? I mean, and this is strictly under the discussion. If this is approved pending a, an acceptable erosion control plan, A, or B, is this tabled for a month to come back with an acceptable erosion control plan? Procedurally, I'm not sure what is the better way to go, but I'm open to any suggestions.
Ms. Hayden.
I think it would be much clearer if we vote to postpone and have them come back, because I don't think John should be designing their project for them, and I think that their erosion control plan is deficient enough that we need to see a new one and view it as a board. That's my feeling, I don't know how others feel.
Is that formed in the...
I would be happy to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I forget who the second was.
I don't know if we had a second, so is there another, is there another motion?
No, actually, I think I did. I seconded for the discussion. That's acceptable to the second.
So, now do we have a new motion on the table?
I will make a motion to postpone this to the July meeting.
For the specific reason of?
Well, do we normally do that in motions, because we normally say, "Well, the applicant heard us tonight and heard what we were looking for."
So, do we have a second to that?
Sure, second.
Second, and I believe the reason for postponement, one of the majors would be an update of the erosion control plans.
Correct.
And before we vote on it, I just want to clarify, because I had asked them about putting a fence around the pond that might or might not stay there, but I see that it actually says that they will either enhance it or they'll fill it in, so I don't think we need a fence, so. I take the whole wacky fence idea.
So, that being said, I'll call the vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Just for paper control purposes, the old plan should be retained. The new one, obviously, is going to change, but we have a big set of...
Correct. She was so green, so sustainable.
More turquoise, yeah.
Let's have a drink, start.
Mr. Chairman?
I can't read. I can't go on. Just excuse yourself for a second.
I'll now read in the last item under public hearings. The application of Catherine R. Whalen, owner of property located at 660 Middle Street, requesting final subdivision approval to subdivide one lot into three lots with the following. Proposed Lot One having 16,377 square feet and 70 feet of street frontage on Middle Street. Proposed Lot Two having 21,124 square feet and 108 feet off of a right-of-way, and Proposed Lot Three having 21,268 square feet and 114 feet off a right-of-way, and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 147 as Lot 19, and lies within a general residence A District and Historic District A.
Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Vera from James Vera and Associates in Newington, here with Catherine Whalen, Charles Godet, Attorney Peelisch, Eric Weinroth from Maltese Engineering, and myself, the surveyor. This is a three-lot subdivision. The existing house is at 660 Middle Street. Excuse me. The existing house is at 660 Middle Street. We're proposing two lots with frontage on Chevrolet Avenue.
Can you pick up the microphone, please?
Thank you. We're proposing two lots that have frontage on Chevrolet Avenue. We were before the... We were before the zoning board of adjustment in August of '08. We received variances for lot one to have a frontage of 70 feet on Middle Street and to allow proposed lot two and three to have access off of a right-of-way. We are proposing a common driveway into the two lots, as was proposed in the preliminary application. We're proposing water to come from a recently constructed hydrant on Chevrolet Avenue up the street, at the service to two lots, and we're proposing a sewer line to tie into the existing sewer line that runs northwesterly, proposing to tie in on Chevrolet Avenue. We have a sewer design plan that was presented to Public Works, and we made changes to that sewer design at their request, and that's pretty much it. There were some requests from the planning department to obtain a driveway permit, which we will do. We will prepare all the deeds. Once we get a pending conditional approval, we will submit our GIS information to the city, and we will monument the property upon completion. Eric Weinrib from Maltese Engineering is here to answer any engineering questions, if you have them, and thank you much.
Questions for the applicant? Jim, I've got a question. What's that, what's that little thing that kind of runs through proposed lot three, and then ends up in a bunch of little squares at the top? I'm on sheet C1, the utilities plan.
Sheet C1, the utilities plan, we're going to be tying into this sewer line?
No, there's something that comes off of, like Chevrolet makes like a little hook, and then runs all the way through the middle of lot three, and then ends up in a bunch of little dots.
Well, that's an existing walkway.
So what happens if the little squares, do they hop?
They're just little squares, little blocks.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if it was something of, is it just a path, a dirt path?
I'm going to let the landowner answer that.
Yeah, it's a pathway. It's a branded pathway. Stepping stones.
I'll label those.
No, that was, that was my only question. I wasn't trying to be facetious, I just, I just didn't know what it was, or what it was supposed to be, so. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Coker.
Just an observation, someday I'd like to get the history of Chevrolet Avenue, but not tonight.
It's very long and convoluted.
Yeah, I remember this from years ago. I used to own a home at 673 Middle Street, just sort of across the street from that, and I remember Chevrolet Avenue, and there was always a debate, is it a private street? Is it public? Is it private? I still don't know how that was resolved, but I guess it's officially called now a public street. Is that correct?
It's a, if you look at the plan, it's a, right where the word avenue is on the plan, it's where the end of the public street is.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the end of the public street.
The EOP, is that what that means?
No, 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 by where the word avenue is on Chevrolet Avenue in the first sheet.
Yeah, oh, first sheet, yeah.
You can see, you can see a boundary there.
Yeah.
That's the end of the, end of the public way.
So the answer is, it's both public and private.
A public-private partnership.
Kind of like serious street.
Awesome.
It is, it is a long response.
That's okay, we don't, it's nine o'clock, I don't need to do the history lesson now, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, thank you. I'll now open up the public. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against the application, second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Oh, Ms. Gafford.
Thank you, Chair. I move to grant final subdivision approval with the following stipulations, the applicant, well, with the stipulations listed in the planning department memorandum. Do I need to read them? Okay, and then I would also, just, just for clarity, I would make a small note on that plan about the little dots. That's, that's a good point.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to propose a report.
That concludes our public hearings. We'll now move on to city council referrals and requests, of which there are four. The board's action in these matters has been deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board is a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or be deemed waived. Item A is a report back from Downtown Parking Focus Group. Rick, can you give us an update on that?
You have, you have a copy of the report, just arrived, I don't know whether it was last night or today, I got it today, and because it's late, it would just be, I would recommend that you just accept the report and schedule for review and possible action at your meeting in July.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you for this, by the way. I look forward to reading it.
Thank Donald.
Tonight, when I...
If I may make an observation, just, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
I would urge the board members to read this, because, and it's an interesting, it was an interesting process, to say the least. It became very clear very quickly to the board, to this focus group, that this was the way to go, and I think it's, it's very well supported, and I would urge you to read it, and be glad to answer questions, either via email, or give me a call, or we'll wait for next month and...
Yeah, probably next month, I think we can...
That's fine.
Fire away, so. I appreciate your efforts on that, too.
Thank you.
Item B, the request from Tony Sheena and Chris Sheena of Portside Seafoods for property located at 21 Congress Street to install a projecting sign.
This is a sign that meets all of the requirements of zoning, and we recommend approval, we recommend that you recommend approval of a license, subject to the usual conditions.
Hello, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. We'll move on to item C, the request from Jeff Kessler of second time around, property located at 19 Congress Street, to install a projecting sign.
Yes, the, I apologize, in the memorandum, the agenda is correct, in the memorandum, the word "and awning" is also included, because the original application included an awning, and I believe it actually may show at some point in these, in the application materials. However, the awning does require approval by the Historic District Commission, and that will be, they have applied for that, and we're not asking you to make a recommendation on that, we're only asking for a recommendation on the projecting sign itself, and again, it meets all the zoning requirements, and we recommend, recommend that you recommend approval with the same stipulations, the same conditions.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. We come to our final city council referrals and requests. Application D, the request of Richard and Linda Harding of 1808 Islington Street for proposed land transfer with the city of Portsmouth.
I better excuse myself.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, Dr. Weinrib would like to make a presentation.
Well, not necessarily. I'll let you go, Mr. Chan.
Or he's available to answer questions anyway. This is something that has been before, it has come to the city council or the planning board a couple times in the past, or, I guess it's come to the planning board a couple times in the past, as a proposed subdivision, and has been withdrawn both times, but what's essentially happening here is a proposal for a land swap in which the property owners, if you look at the plan, the property owners would receive a small triangular parcel of land where their current driveway is already located onto, I don't know whether it's actually Plains Avenue or Pearson Street, whatever it actually is at that point, I guess it's Plains, and so that's lot B, shown in green on the plan, and then in return, they would transfer to the city the larger interior lot, lot A, which is primarily a wetlands area, but also receives drainage from the public drainage, stormwater system, going across the old schoolhouse lot. Lot B is a portion of the, of the schoolhouse lot, but is, if you look at it, it really looks like it's part of the Hardings' property. The, the point that, that I noted in the, in the memorandum, beyond the short-term benefits, is there is a long-term benefit to the Hardings in the terms of being able to have them have a better lot for future subdivision, and they, they show that on the plan as lot one and lot two, they would have the ability to create a second lot, which is what they had been proposing in the past, but in this case, it allows the, the future house on that lot to be closer to the street, which is more consistent with the existing development in the area.
Ms. Hayden.
I, my feeling on this tonight is that I'm not ready to take action, because, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm not for it, I feel that this came out to the planning department, planning board on last Tuesday, following the city council's meeting, it was a referral out of, of that last Monday's meeting, and then it got put on the agenda that came out to us, you know, right after that, and I feel like we need more time, staff time, to do a little due diligence on this, to get some input from the assessor, and the environmental planner, and legal department, because anytime we're swapping land, or buying land, or giving away land, then we have to look at what the public benefit is, we have to look at what the liabilities are, and, and I feel this board, at least this board member, would like a little bit more input from staff on that sort of issue.
Mr. Coker.
Please let the record show, for the first time in history, twice in one evening, I've agreed with Cindy. This piece of property appears, unless I'm reading these plans incorrectly, to be landlocked with lot A. So I think it is, and again, I'm not, I'm not averse to a land swap, it looks like on the surface, a heck of a deal, you know, three or four times the physical square footage and all that, which may or may not be a public benefit, I don't know. So I would agree with Cindy, that I think this needs a little bit more homework.
Is that a motion?
So I would make a motion to postpone it to the July planning board meeting, and in the interim, give staff time to do some more due diligence.
Second.
Second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. That concludes city council referrals and requests. We have one item under old business. Item A, the appointment of the planning board rep to the HDC.
Congratulations, John.
And I think that we will put that on next month's agenda, Rick?
Okay, sure.
There's no vote needed on that, Rick?
No.
Okay.
All right, for $100,000, I'll do it.
And then the last item, item five, application A, under planning directors' report, the administrative approval for 195 Hanover Street, Portwalk, Lot Number Three.
This is the, the, lot number three is the new municipal parking lot that was approved one or two meetings ago, and there were some very minor changes that needed to be made in the design. Part of it was including some motorcycle parking spaces, putting in some bollards to protect a, I believe it was a fire alarm box, and some, some signage around the entrance gates, and it didn't affect materially the plan, so I granted administrative approval for those.
Okay. And do we have any other housekeeping items?
Just one, we have a work session coming up with the Board of Adjustment, next Wednesday.
At what time?
Seven?
Seven to nine, I think.
Seven to nine. Wait.
I'll check.
I think it's seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
Gene says seven to nine, it's in the book.
Okay. You say so.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine next Wednesday.
And that would be a really important meeting to attend, because what we're trying to do is, is share our brilliance on what we, the intent of the zoning ordinance is with the Board of Adjustment, because we made a lot of changes, and we really, as a board, I don't think brought that companion board along as well as we might have, so that's part of the goal.
And I think, I think we can bring them up to date on, on some of the changes we're considering, as we talked about earlier, and maybe there'll be some ideas that they have as well.
Great. Well, if we hear nothing else, do I have a motion for adjournment?
You bet.
Good night. Thank you.